Hey Kathy, could you please mute yourself? Alrighty, today is Tuesday, June 9th, and a meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board is called "The Order." And this meeting is entirely online with public access through a link provided on the agenda, and it is also being broadcast on CCTV Channel 21. We'll start by with attendance, board attendance, starting with Satya, are you here?
Yes, please.
And Paul, Paul Kyler, thank you Director Kyler, Director Glossy.
Here.
Director Goss. Director Bethel.
Here.
Director Director Goss, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, and Director Hyun. She did say that she might come if she was able to just to attend, but it looks like she is not here. So Chair Hyun is absent, and I am going to be chairing this meeting in her absence. So we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Alrighty, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, and it looks like agenda modifications, there are none. So we're going to go ahead and move on to the spotlights on success. And I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Perry for this.
Right, and if you don't mind, Director Lippold, I'd just like to make a couple comments before we begin, would that be okay with you?
Oh, that's totally fine.
Okay, thank you. Hey, so I just want to make some comments on world events and a lot of the testimony we've received tonight. So, and I've just prepared some for you to kind of set the stage. So, joined by a community of caring and dedicated educators, I do want to state publicly that I'm horrified at the murder of George Floyd. And these past 10 days, we've really had a number of big conversations within the district. And I want you and I want our community to know that I've challenged both my administrative team and our district in our district-wide staff meetings, which have about 2,800 people in attendance at, to actively demonstrate anti-racism. We know that racism exists in our schools, our district, and also in our community. And we, as a public school, need to remain committed and recommit to dismantling racist structures so all students can learn and grow in safe environments. And as we think about this month as Pride Month, it's also important to remember that as we celebrate Pride Month, which stemmed from the actions of a black transgender woman, Marsha Johnson, she helped spur the civil rights movement for LGBTQ+ friends, colleagues, and community members through the Stonewall riots. So this time is an important time for us to be reflective of the place we are in this world right now. And I do know that the community has raised many concerns about the SROs in our schools. And so I want to say that I've received that, I've been reading it all day. And I truly believe this is a really important community conversation and one I'm committed to having. But what I want us to do is to be thoughtful and deliberate and do deliberate outreach and really engage in the conversations with our community to create a common understanding of the concerns and to be sure that we get input and conversation from all of our communities of color, including our black students and their families, students of our Pacific Islanders, Latinx, Native American, Asian-American immigrants, and also our LGBTQ+ students. I know you have a petition that's also signed by a number of those organizations that represent our students and families. So I want to say we hear that. But I do really think it's important that we do thoughtful outreach and deliberation, really be listeners, because there are some things we're hearing about SROs that I just think we need to hear first. So it's really an important dialogue about the SRO program, what it is, what the concerns are that are raised in the correspondence. So please know I honor that, and you're going to hear a lot of public comment about that in the budget committee process. I'll talk a little bit more about the SRO contract within that process and what it means to adopt the budget. So I'll save those comments. But I just want to end with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King that says, "A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." And as we engage in this, we really do have to think about what is it our students are telling us about treatment, what that means, and how do we keep all kids safe and welcome in our schools? So with that, I'll turn it over to Lillian, who's going to do our spotlights on success.
Thank you. Tonight, we want to spotlight Arco AM PM on Southeast Commercial Street and The Kitchen on Court Street as our Business Partners of the Month for June 2020. Hussein Mustafa, owner of Arco AM PM on Southeast Commercial Street, has been supporting students with special needs in the Community Transition Program since 2006. These student skill builders learn the skills to help them get jobs and become self-sufficient upon graduation. At Arco, students learn about customer service at the pumps, the pump hardware, and the different tech used for paying. At least 100 different students have gained these valuable experiences over the years. Mr. Mustafa recently retired, and we didn't want to miss our chance to sincere thank you for your support. It has truly made a difference. Our Community Transition Program also wishes to thank Chef Bernard Malherbe and The Kitchen on Court Street for giving student skill builders the chance to experience working in a restaurant. Students learn customer service skills along with food preparation and serving skills. The Kitchen on Court Street is a new Community Transition Program partner that began supporting our students this school year. We look forward to continuing a relationship that will help many more students in the years to come. Our Community Partner of the Month is the Oregon Lions Sight and Hearing Foundation. Working together with local Lions Clubs and Salem Kaiser Student Volunteers, the foundation tested the eyesight of more than 16,000 students at 62 of our schools this year. Undetected vision problems can impact a student's life in many ways, including causing them to struggle in school. Students who are identified as having vision problems are referred to the eye doctor to correct the issues. Superintendent Perry made a special request for us to make sure and thank Executive Director Doug Thompson, who is also a Salem Kaiser Public Schools graduate, and the Oregon Lions Sight and Hearing Foundation for all of their support. Moving to our staff spotlight, our final spotlight goes to our Budget and Financial Services Department, which is timely given that we have the budget on the agenda tonight. They have received awards and recognition of outstanding governmental accounting and financial reporting. The Association of School Business Officials honored them with a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year ending in 2018. The Governmental Finance Officers Association also awarded Financial Services with a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Financial Services has received these awards each year for more than 30 years. The awards represent a significant accomplishment and a high level of commitment to fiscal integrity. Congratulations.
Is that all of them? Okay, perfect. So, thank you again to them, I think that was awesome. And also thank you to Superintendent Perry for her comments, couldn't agree more. So thank you for doing that. So now we move on to public comment on Agenda Items Only. This section of public comment is for Agenda Items Only. If you are commenting on the budget, we will hear that during the budget hearing. If you are commenting on a non-Agenda item, we will hear that comment later in the meeting. We provided a link on the agenda, which is also on our website, for people to submit public comment. The link provides details about three options for submitting comments, either by written comment, pre-recorded video comment, or call-in during the meeting. We also provided an email address on the agenda, which the public could submit comment. We allow three minutes for each person to comment. Those needing translation for their public comment will be provided six minutes total. Our communications team will facilitate public comment. So I will turn this assignment over to them. Lillian, do we have any public comment?
All of our public comment is related to the budget hearing, and then there is one item that is a non-Agenda item.
And Lillian, would you talk about how we clustered the SRO comments so the audience and everyone knows?
Yes, so for all of the comments that were submitted with regard to SROs, either in favor or against, those have all been put with the budget hearing as it relates to defunding that contract. So those will all be shared in accordance with the budget hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good to know, and thank you for the detail there. Alrighty, so now it is time to open the 2020-2021 budget hearing. A hearing on the 2020-21 budget is now open. So Superintendent Perry, I'll turn this over to you for some.
Yeah, so let me just start with kind of context of where we are, kind of in the financial picture. So first of all, nothing has changed since our last, our last budget approval. Whenever, that feels like it was three months ago, I think it was just a couple weeks ago. So nothing has changed in the fiscal forecast. We don't have any updated numbers from ODE. We, I think, are hearing that a special session of the legislature is in July. And so we're not expecting any additional information out of ODE or the state legislature before June 30th. The, we will, as of tomorrow, get the back-to-school guidance from ODE, that's a word we have. I think what we're hearing is the back-to-school guidance is going to require creating a district plan, which we've already worked towards. We know that some of the requirements of in-person learning will really require us to do things very differently. And we will have a good number of at-risk employees who will need to not come to work. So we're trying to wrap all that in to, which does have budget impacts, right? Even though I can't tell you exactly what they are. We still are expecting some federal cares money. We still are hopeful for a $9 billion allocation out of the state school fund from the state legislature. And I think there's a path to it, even though I'm not, you know, I'm maybe at 50% in my crystal ball. So some things that we're doing, we have a gen fund, close to a gen fund reduction plan that we're really close to being ready to share. We believe we can get to the $38 million or $37 million with, when we take the CARES Act and the furlough day plan and all, and a number of other tightening of the belt, increasing our beginning fund balance. We think we can do that without any significant layoffs. We think we can do it without layoffs at all. But I'm just holding out that for that last little bit of information. And what that should signal to you is that we've done everything we can to lay out reductions if we get to $38 million in reductions without impacting classrooms in the same way. And I know that was something that was brought up. So whenever I say we're not have, I don't see us having a layoff, that's a really good sign. And that we've also really looked carefully in every place we could. The one place that might have to be the balancing account for, is that we do have a large number, not large number, is the right word, I can't remember the exact amount of licensed reserve, but we have positions in licensed reserve that we might have to hold if that really becomes a place where we need to balance the budget. So there might be a few less positions, but not in terms of a massive layoff, which I think is a really good place to be and should help us feel hopeful that we can weather this carefully. It does require dipping into reserves. And you have to remember that this is not a one-year problem. We're into easily the next biennium and likely the biennium after that from the budget forecasts I've seen. And I see that Director Glossy is nodding her head because I believe she just came off of seeing the slides for what the next two bienniums look like. So we'll need to be super cautious about that. But we also have so many unknowns, we just have to go with our best planning at this point. So that's really important to know, and I think that's also important for our staff to know that we're not signaling massive layoffs at this time, and we're in a really good position. We have plans around the SIA of what it might look like at 50% funding or 75% funding. And our plan needs to be that we get some feedback on the SIA if we get some funding, like what should be the most important priorities that we fund in the SIA. Craig and I were even talking a bit today about how do we still get in the planning phase, whether there's SIA or not for a couple schools to come on as dual-language schools, not in 2021, but in 2122. So we're trying to think about how do we move initiatives. But also, if we do get funds, because the corporate tax does have dollars there, if funds go into the SIA, we're going to try to get some feedback from our community groups about what are, what are the most important things to fund. My guess about some of those will be things like our community, our C-Socks, our graduation specialists. Some of those things were really important to our community. And so we'll work to get some feedback on that. We still have a freeze on hiring on our student investment account because we still don't have any clear information even about our application from ODE. So as it pertains to the school resource officers, they are in the budget at, on page 67, if you happen to have your budget booked with you. But they're budgeted at a little over $1 million for the SRO contract. That is a contract for SROs that is with not only the city of Salem, but the city of Kaiser and Marion County, because all three jurisdictions serve our schools. And so that is in the budget. What I do want you to know, though, and the community to know, is the SRO conversation is not dependent on whether you adopt or don't adopt the budget. This budget would even allow me or you to make a decision about the SRO contract at a later time. So it doesn't have to be today. So if you adopt the budget, that does not mean you're supporting the SRO contract. Just know it's, it's an item in the budget adoption. And as I said last time, this gives us the flexibility to make all kinds of decisions. And, and I just want us to be sure that we really have a thoughtful conversation, be deliberate with some action, and we, we do that in the next couple of weeks. I'm working, I'd like to meet with our law enforcement leaders soon and help engage them in having a conversation with our community about this. I think that's a healthy place for dialogue. Because if we don't have SROs in school, we will, we will have police officers come to our school. So opening up the dialogue is a critical thing for us to do. And I know that our law enforcement leaders would be happy to do that. They're, the sheriff and both chiefs regularly attend a number of our community-based organization groups anyway. So they're familiar to our community. And so what I would hope to do is in the next couple days, that by the end of this week, I've laid out a, an engagement or deliberate discussion plan with our community, that then we could begin lodging, and we could come back to this as a conversation in the boardroom early July. We have plenty of time to make a decision prior to the start of school year. And as we think about, you know, the other thing we have to think about is what does school look like next year? And as school looks different, how do things like SROs also potentially look different in our schools? So know that I'm 100% committed to that, and a decision around the budget doesn't have to come with that. Of course, you get to adopt the budget, so you get to make that decision to move it forward, to move the budget forward or not. But no, my commitment is I'll have the conversation with our community regardless of what you do along the budget process. So I think with that, the entire SRO contract is actually under $1 million. On page 67 in the book, the amount in that line item is low over $1 million. So with that, I will turn it over to questions from the board or questions from the budget committee.
Do we have any questions from our board? Actually, let's start with the budget committee. Our budget committee, who do we have here? Levy, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, but Jacqueline is also here.
Alrighty, Jacqueline, do you have any questions in regards to the budget?
None at this time.
Perfect, thank you so much. And Director Chanagiri? Do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, I really want to thank you for brighted out, talking about this SRO issue. You know, with everything going on, our entire community is so traumatized, and everybody is going through all kinds of very scary and different emotions. So setting that stage was very good for me to kind of sift through all this. You know, I call it like triple drama, racism, violence, and COVID-19 all coming together. And it really helps us have a framework and think through this rather than allowing our fears alone to direct the entire budget process. So thank you very much, and hopefully it allows me to think through what this would look like.
Perfect, thank you so much. Director Kyler, do you have any questions? Shaking your head, no. So Director Glossy?
I don't have, I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate the clarification about where we would have opportunities to take a look at the SRO contracts. So thank you Superintendent, and I look forward to the community conversation around that. So thank you.
Thank you Director Glossy. Alright, Director Bethel, do you have any questions?
I don't.
And then Director Hyun's not here, Director Goss?
I do have some, or I will have some questions, but I would rather hear from the community first, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And then I don't have any questions either. Again, we have no idea what everything's going to look like until we see, hear from the governor and the state as to what things are going to look like. So no questions here. Alrighty, so we will now hear public testimony on the 2020-21 budget. Lillian, do we have any testimony on the 2020-21 budget?
We do, we have testimony over the phone, we have video testimony, and we have written testimony. And so we are actually going to start with the call-in testimony so that those, those community members will not be left on hold.
Perfect, well, you run this thing for as far as public comment.
Okay, so our first caller is Ryan, and he is on the line, I'm going to unmute Ryan. Okay, Ryan, you are live.
Hi, thanks, my name's Ryan Perkins, I live in Kaiser. I'm a graduate of South Salem High School, and I'd like to ask the school board to terminate the intergovernmental agreements surrounding school resource officers, officers in Salem Kaiser schools, and reinvest the total sum of that money into education in a way determined in consultation with educators and students of color. Police haven't always existed. The American institution of the police originated in ranger patrols that committed genocide against indigenous peoples living on the lands colonizers stole as they pushed west, and slave patrols that enforced the shameful property rights of slave owners, and then strike-breaking forces that were called in to protect the capital of business owners and murder workers who stood up against their own exploitation. This historical legacy informs police methods and behavior all across the country, as we've seen in, literally, without exaggeration, hundreds of videos from the last two weeks. The police are meant to ensure that residents of their communities comply with a social order that exploits working-class people, and especially black people, indigenous people, and people, and other people of color. They're authorized by the state to use violence to achieve that goal. They're authorized to use as much of it as they want to. And as we've seen for years, but especially in the last two weeks, they, they won't hesitate to murder a main people. Besides the very real risk of physical violence that their mere presence in our schools brings, they also substantially increase the likelihood that students will find themselves incarcerated. Studies show that when police have more contact with the community, they're more likely to arrest members of that community. They also show that 99 out of every 100 arrests leads to jail time, and that jail time increases a person's chances of being found guilty, receiving a harsher sentence, and committing future crimes. These arrest records also generate and sustain problems outside of the criminal justice system itself. People with arrest records face substantial difficulties finding employment, credit, and housing. But you don't need studies to know any of this because students and community members have been telling you about their own experiences of these problems for some time already. So again, I'd like to ask you that the school district divest all of the funds that go to the police and put them into our students, working with community organizations led by people of color, and spend, spend that money on hiring more staff and teachers of color, create ethnic studies curricula and culturally responsive extracurricular programs for black and brown students. I yield my time, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. And who do we have next?
Our next caller is Sandra, and she is on the line. Sandra, you are live. Maybe. I'm going to look up our next caller, just in case she needs a minute. Okay, we can try coming back to Sandra in a second. Our next caller is Deborah, and Deborah, you're on the line.
Yes, good evening.
Thank you.
Directors and Superintendent, okay, Directors and Superintendent Perry, thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Deb Patterson, I'm the mother of two young adults who graduated from South Salem High School about five years ago. I'd like to speak to the budget proposal related to continued funding for school resource officers. In these days of difficult choices related to budgets, I would like to point out that according to the National Center for Education Statistics, in 2015, the most recent year for which federal data was available, only 45% of schools had a school resource officer. So more than half of the schools in America seem to be doing fine without them. Which schools have SROs? Again, according to the NCES, schools with more racially diverse student bodies were 13% more likely to have SROs. Schools with higher numbers of students from lower-income families were 24% more likely to have SROs. And schools with more than 1,000 students were 25% more likely to have SROs. So large, diverse schools, like most of the schools in the Salem Kaiser School District. Some say that SROs are deterrents to mass shootings. But we have heard of mass shootings at schools with school resource officers, so clearly they were not a deterrent in those cases. In addition, among those referred to law enforcement, students of color are disproportionately represented among those detained by SROs. According to Education World, while black students make up 16% of US public school enrollment during the 2011-2012 school year, they represented 27% of those referred to law enforcement by schools and 31% of those who were subject to school-related arrests. Sadly, the indicators... Sadly, the indicators are that these numbers have changed little in the ensuing years, and significant disparities also exist for Latinx students and other students of color. I would urge the Salem Kaiser School District and the city of Salem to revisit the budget and invest in funding for more school counselors, teaching assistants, and other needed educators rather than investing in school resource officers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, who do we have next?
Thank you.
I'm going to try to see if I can reach Sandra again. Sandra, are you on the line?
Yes. I am on the line. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, my name is Sandra Hernandez, and I work for, um, Latinos Unidos siempre. I am the director. So I am speaking on behalf of all the youth that we serve, two thousand, more than two thousand you, youth over the last twenty-five years in the Salem Kaiser School District. So I am, I am, I'm with my, with the students I serve today to demand that the Salem Kaiser School District Superintendent, Board members, and district officials stand in solidarity with black and brown students by ending all funding that places police in our schools, known as school resource officers, by terminating its contracts with the Salem Kaiser Police Department and the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and any other law enforcement agencies. We demand that these divested funds are reinvested into improving our education. In the last few weeks, the world has witnessed the brutal death of George Floyd, a black unarmed man, brother, son, and community member, killed by Minneapolis police, police. We deeply mourn with George Floyd's family, and we stand with black communities across the nation. Now more than ever, we are committed to dismantling the systems and institutions of oppression that kill black and brown people, and that put us in prisons, and that push us into the margins. That is why we demand that the Salem Kaiser School District end all funding going into police in schools immediately and indefinitely. We demand that the Salem Kaiser School District terminate, do not renew contracts with the Salem Kaiser Police Department and Marion County Sheriff's Office that places SROs in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Thanks to the students from New York University, we now know that the school district spends about twenty million dollars on policing within schools annually. And I want you all to understand that by policing, what we mean is something that includes all the systemic issues around policing, not just SROs. This includes staff, administrative, operational, and equipment costs. Policing can include school security guards, security cameras, behavioral specialists, et cetera. So this is about removing the infrastructure that increases and encourages policing, policing of students, especially students of color and students with disabilities. So when we talk about police-free schools, we know this is just the beginning to ending the systematic policing of our school district. Additionally, the federal government has invested over fourteen billion dollars since nineteen ninety-two on policing in school accro- in schools across the nation. This is a call for us to reinvest in our education. Police violence towards black and brown communities is not just an interpersonal racial issue. It is a si- system and institutional issue that must be ended. By ending funding that goes into police in our school district, our school district will show that it prioritizes, it prioritizes the safety of students of color and their education. Current funding that goes into policing students can be invested to improve education. So here are the ways we are demanding that the school district divest school police funds to support black indigenous students of color in the following way. So I hope you give me a few more minutes to finish up because this is extremely important. And I'm speaking on behalf of many students of color. We just need to finish up our demands.
Yeah, I, I totally understand, and I, and I really want to thank you for coming on. I think it's really important. Um, I do, we do have to stick to the three minutes, unfortunately, just because we have to make sure that everybody gets the time to speak. Um, however, I, I would be more than willing to if you sent that an email to us, um, to any of us. I, any of us would be willing to, uh, to read it and respond to you.
Uh, yes, um, ev- everything has been sent by email, so, uh, read over our demands, uh, which include how you can divest those police funds into, uh, supporting students of color.
Perfect, again, and I thank you so much for that. Um, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but we do have to stick to it. Alrighty, um, who do we have, who do we have next?
Okay, next we have Luis. Luis, you are live. Please make sure your TV or stream is on mute, so we can hear you clearly.
Uh, which include how you can divest those police funds into, uh, supporting students of color.
Perfect, again, and I thank you so much for that.
I'll need to mute his, probably his other device.
Who do we have, who we have next?
Okay, next we have Luis. Luis, you are. Luis, if you're on the line, please mute your stream.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please put your, uh, other video on mute?
Hi, my name is Luis Acosta. And growing up undocumented, the police were never my friends. Every day growing up as a child, I lived with the thought at the back of my head that any day I could become deported, arrested, or murdered by the hands of police or ICE brutality. Seeing the SROs patrol the schools that I attended put a strain of toxic stress that white people such as you all, the school board members, will never understand. But enough is enough, and now it's time for you to understand. Students of color are sick and tired of the systems of oppression that you impose into our public schools. When the police look at us, they don't see us as human beings, or even as students, but instead just for the color, color of our skin. When the police look at us, they don't care about us pursuing higher education, but instead they look for any reason to belittle, oppress, and incarcerate us. The Salem and Kaiser Public School District currently allocates twenty million dollars into the policing of public schools. In the near future, this district is going to face a whopping forty-eight million dollars in budget cuts. When that happens, when is this district going to, going to start divesting and removing the systems of policing from our public schools? When are you all going to start hiring less resource officers, but instead more teachers, and specifically, crucially, more teachers of color? When are you all going to start investing into more resources and programs and classes to benefit and not hurt brown and black youth? With the atmosphere that we are currently living in, this decision from you all better be soon. This was possible in Portland, and I know that it's possible here in Salem too. Invest in us. Show us that you care more about your students than you do about SROs. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to speak. Really appreciate that. And who do we have next on the line?
Okay, next, I believe we should have Tony on the line. Tony, are you there?
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please be sure to mute your TV or stream in the background if it's on.
Yeah. Okay. My name is Sonny Vianata. I am seventeen years old, and I go to North Salem High School. I have been attending school board meetings for three years, and I have not seen any changes surrounding the school to prison pipeline. You are actively supporting and funding. I saw my closest peers expelled and suspended and arrested. When I was twelve years old, I was walking down the street to go to the park, and I randomly got stopped by four police officers. One of the officers' names was Officer Rios. They had guns drawn at me. I was just twelve years old. I'm a brown kid experiencing racially profiling by the police. They detain me and were trying to find something to get me in trouble. They didn't call my mom and inform her that her own child got detained by Salem police. They asked questions like if I was a gang member. I was just twelve years old. Ever since that day, my life has changed. I was scared to go outside because if I moved an inch that day, I would be probably another person of color dead with no justice. These trauma experiences don't only happen to me, it happened to every black and brown person in the United States. These traumatic experiences are real, and folks like you stay silent. What kind of person does that? When you stay silent, you uphold white supremacy. You should have di- you should divest police presence in school because you do not know the traumatic experiences students of color have with the police. Education and police don't belong together. When a person of color knows that there's a police presence, you are wondering if the police officer is going to arrest them because of the skin color, or if immigration customs enforcement also knows eyes would be involved. You have more people, we need more people of color as stu- as teachers and, uh, in the Salem Kaiser School District, and more classes, ethnic classes and studies for middle school and high school students. The Salem Kaiser School District invests about twenty million dollars annually on policing students. You are more guilty for investing more on continuing our trauma and toxic stress than you have invested in our right to be able to feel safe in schools and youth of color.
Tony, I, I want to say thank you for coming out to speak. I mean, um, I mean, you're right, most of us can't imagine the pain or what it would feel like, you know, to be, uh, to feel like you're being racially profiled. And, and I mean, I can't say I know what that's like, but I can say that, um, I mean, a lot of things you're talking about, the things we're talking about with the SIA and other things as well. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming out. Um, we appreciate that. Um, and who do we have next?
Um, next on the call list is Gerald, I believe. Gerald, you are live.
Uh, hello. Uh, good evening, and, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Gerald Turner, and I am a teacher who works for Salem Kaiser Public Schools. Almost two weeks ago, Superintendent Christie Perry challenged educators to find ways to be actively anti-racist. My testimony tonight is a small part of my answer to that challenge. Before I begin, I need to make perfectly clear that although my experience as an educator informs my testimony, what I say is not and should not be construed to be a representation of the views of the district. It is instead my plea as an employee, as a parent of two young children, and as a member of this community. I urge the board to take action to end the presence of school resource officers in our schools. In a time of national pain and soul-searching about the role of police in society, and a time of impending budget cuts, we cannot afford, ethically or financially, to continue this practice. Research has shown, time and again, that the use of police in schools does not reduce disciplinary incidents or criminal conduct. Instead, the presence of school resource officers has been shown to increase referrals from schools to the criminal justice system. When criminal charges are brought due to conduct at schools, students of color are disproportionately affected. In preparing for this testimony, I have listened to dozens of community members who had a variety of opinions on the use of school resource officers. Many individuals have had positive experiences with individual SROs, and I do not want to discount those experiences. Building relationship and community is at the heart of what we do in education, but we must look for options that provide those same positive experiences without criminalizing our students of color. Uh, earlier in this meeting, we were discussing matters relating to the school budget. Going forward, we will clearly need to make cuts and decide what programs are worth keeping and how our resources are being used. The funds allocated for SROs could be used for increased counseling staff, school nurses, or other student support services. It is time to consider how we allocate our scarce resources. I urge the board to follow the example of Portland Public Schools and withdraw support for the school resource officer program in order to fund community-building alternatives within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, who do we have next?
Okay, I believe we have Vicente. Uh, Vicente, you are on the line. I think. Vicente, are you on? I will jump to our next caller. So our next caller is Alex. Alex, you are on the line. Alex, are you on the, on the phone? Vicente, are you on the line?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
My name, hello, my name is Alex Navarro. Um, I'm gonna be speaking behalf of a family member. Hello, my name is Vicente Oliver. I have been attending Salem Kaiser School District for eleven years now. I have been to Yoshikawa Elementary, Scott Elementary. What? Scott Elementary, and Four Corners Elementary, and Hock Middle School, and North High School, and now attending South High School. I had to move to different schools because of housing crisis. And as you know, you may know this, is a comment for the students that you serve in the district. Living in poverty makes it harder for us to succeed. Poverty, along as with institu- institutionalized racism, are the gas of the Sa- Salem Kaiser School Prison to, School to Prison Pipeline. Two weeks ago, we witnessed the murder of George Floyd by the hands of a white police officer. This year, you have seen the murder of innocent people that have been murdered only because of their skin color. Being a person of color, I know how it feels to be pointed at point-blank range by a police officer. I have two encounters with police officers. One of the encounters was when I was trying to get into my own house. The cop pointed the gun at me because he thought I was trying to break into my own house, even though I was opening up with my key. All he saw was my brown skin. The cop said that I looked sketchy. I was very, very lucky that one of my mentors were there in his car since he was dropping me off. If my mentor wasn't there to witness, I would have been shot. Another instance is when I was walking home from the store, and they said that I had matches description of a person that stole something. I had showed them the purchase receipt, but I knew the, they had racially profiled me for being browned. As you can see, having police officers in schools brings trauma and fear to people of color. Having officers in schools puts students at risk and increases the school-to-prison pipeline. That is why, as a student of color in the Salem Kaiser School District, I demand that our district defunds policing and reinvest in my education and the education for all my four younger siblings. Don't get it twisted. The, so S O R, SROs are not the title, the, the, they're not the tip of the problem. We want you to defund policing. And thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate you coming to speak on behalf of your family. Alright, who do we have next?
Okay, so that concludes all of our callers. I believe Adriana was gonna, um, go next, and then Lilian will follow up with reading some of the written comments.
Perfect.
Is that correct?
Uh, Adriana?
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, Chair Hay and Vice Chair LePold and members of the board, for the record. My name is Adriana Miranda. I'm the Executive Director of Gausa, Oregon Immigrant Aid Organization, and I come before you tonight as a concerned leader, parent, and active member of this community. We're all feeling anger, rage, and sadness of yet another black man murdered in the hands of police in Minneapolis. We stand in solidarity with our black community as we mourn the loss of George Floyd and the many other black lives murdered in the hands of police brutality. I'm here tonight to show full support for the letter that was sent by Luz and stand behind the demands articulated in that letter. We demand our school district to de-invest all the funds that go into police and reinvest into schools to improve educational outcomes for our black and brown students. The presence of school resource officers in our schools, although meant to be better trained to be in schools, the presence of always supported the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline, and increasing decriminalization of black and brown students. Policing goes beyond police presence in schools, and it involves infrastructures in schools that criminalize students. We will no longer stand to support the systems that kill black and brown people and pushes our students to the margins. Since the mid-nineties, police have increasingly become more significantly funded than our educational systems, and we must end the intergenerational harm done to black and brown students and rather reinvest into systems of restorative justice and closing the opportunity gap for these students. I highly encourage our leadership team at Salem Kaiser and the Board of Directors to lead a community-led and centered process that would focus on redirecting funds to systems and reinvesting these resources into our most vulnerable students. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Adriana, I appreciate it.
Great. Now, we're going to move into a portion of comments that have been submitted via email. Following those, we'll show comments that have been submitted via video, and then we'll come back for comments that were submitted online. So we have, um, a number of comments here, um, and so I will, uh, read them and identify who they're from and where they reside. Our first comment is from, uh, Kalia Flocker. She is a resident of Turner. Dear Salem Kaiser School Board, it is time for our district to divest all funds spent on police and reinvested in our schools with the purpose of better supporting our students. As a teacher in the Salem Kaiser School District, I believe it is in the best interest of all of our students that we spend the money currently being spent on school resource officers in a manner that is preventative, educational, and healing. Police presence in schools only increases a sense of fear among students and shows a distrust of our children. Instead, we need to spend this money on things like increased mental health resources, ethnic studies courses, hiring teachers of color, and funding culturally responsive activities before and after school hours. There are so many better ways we can use the funds we currently spend on policing our students. Our students need support and education, not police. The next comment is from Gisella Espinoza. My name is Gisella Espinoza. I am a former student of the Salem Kaiser School District. This email is regarding police budgeting and why I believe cops and security guards should not be on our school. Since middle school, my experience with the police and security hasn't been well. They have always been there to intimidate rather than protect. I went to Parish Middle School, a low-income school with a majority of brown students, and I have seen people I grew up with get detained. They were children, children. No child should be detained and incarcerated, especially in a place that is meant for learning and growth. As for security guards, many security guards I know have always intimidated the students and have used their authority to coerce young women. The security guards I had would joke about using drugs with me. They would also look to criminalize the brown students at my school. I was followed off campus during a release period by security guards. He took time out of both our days to intimidate me and threaten me with disciplinary actions if I did not cooperate. I also have two younger siblings who attend Parish Middle School and two black little brothers who will most likely attend Parish Middle School in the future. I do not feel safe having them in our schools. The budgeting for security and for police should go toward our education. Schools such as McKay and North are overcrowded and need more classrooms. The low-income schools need better books, and teachers should be getting paid more. Students are under the care of the Salem Kaiser School District for seven hours of the day, and many students don't feel safe nor want to go to school because of how criminalized they are for the color of their skin. I have been to school board meetings and seen the school board silence the community for speaking out about this issue. The district needs to do better. Respectfully, a student of color who is exhausted. Our next comment is from Emma Dorland. Dear Salem Kaiser School Board members, I've been deeply moved and outraged by what we're experiencing these past two weeks here and worldwide. Unfortunately, our society, systems, and institutions are engineered to exclude, marginalize, and even attack and kill black humans, in addition to indigenous people and people of color. This may or may not be something you are aware of prior to the outpouring of support for black lives that we've seen across the world and at the Salem Capitol Building last Saturday. If you are not aware of the implications of being white, please understand, and I speak to you as a white person here, that our lack of awareness has the profundity, urgency, and persistence of this problem is because we are used, we are used to benefiting from the world, the way our world is engineered. Of course, we only benefit in privileges. Meanwhile, our humanity, our conscious and our consciousness, the very essence of who we truly are, is diminished each time we make unconscionable choices or sit by and support others who do. At this time, it is unconscionable to continue to fund the school resource officers that work in the Salem Kaiser Public Schools. I am a fourth grade teacher in our bilingual program here in town, and I speak and stand in solidarity with the NAACP, Latinos Unidos, Cuyampre, Casa, Oregon, Bakun, and many other organizations across our city and state in demanding that SKP has terminate and does not renew any contracts it holds with the Salem Police Department. All of the funds that support school-based policing must be reinvested to support our students' wellbeing, mental health, extracurricular, and academic achievement. Policing our students in school is proven through research to have been a dysfunctional practice that only exacerbates disproportionate incarceration of young people of color in particular. The school-to-prison and deportation pipeline is real, and supporting it or participating it in any way whatsoever is unconscionable. Together today, we can live our values and truly protect our students. Divest all funds from the police and reinvest in school improvements. Our next comment is from Claire Clark, a South Salem resident. Dear School Board members, along with many others, I believe you must end the School Resource Officer Program this year. As you face the extreme budget challenges during the months ahead, including the possibility of reducing the number of teachers, it is difficult to justify spending limited funds on policing in our schools. Our next comment is from Laura Vigeland. I apologize if I mispronounced that last name, sorry, Laura. Um, she's a Salem Kaiser Public Schools employee. Good evening, School Board members. My name is Laura Vigeland, and I work for Salem Kaiser Public Schools as a speech-language pathologist. I am also a resident of Salem. I am sure you are aware by now that the systemic racism permeates all aspects of our society, including education. I am writing to you today to affirm that our, that Black Lives Matter and that our school district needs to do more to support our black students and staff. In particular, I am writing to support the petition that is being submitted to you tonight demanding that Salem Kaiser Public Schools divest all the funds that go into police and reinvest into schools to improve education. The presence of police in our schools contributes to the school-to-prison deportation pipeline that threatens our black students and students of color. Our school district must no longer support these systems that oppress or even kill our students and community members. Instead, this money should be spent on resources that can help our minority students and improve education. It is time for Salem Kaiser Public Schools to take action that says our black students' lives matter. Thank you for listening. Our next public comment is from Nadine LaSheminat, I'm sorry, Nadine. Um, Nadine is from Salem, Oregon. Dear School Board members, I would like to add my voice to the growing chorus of concern about the School Resource Officer Program. This program has no place in our public schools. This will perhaps be the most challenging year for school budgets we have ever seen. One clear way to save funds for critical areas is to defund this needless, indefensible, and harmful program. We should allocate limited funds for teachers, student programs, learning materials, computer labs, and building maintenance, not an armed security force. Students have clearly said they do not feel the School Resource Officer Program makes them feel more secure, safe. They are your most important constituents. Please listen to them. It's time to retire armed officers in our schools. Our next comment is from Jennifer McGee. She says, I would like to see the contract that Salem Kaiser has with the police be used for more counselors and smaller class sizes. Instead of increasing and maxing out security at schools, build more community schools. Put more investment in the front end. Our next comment is from Ray Quizemberry. Dear School Board members, it's time to take the police out of our schools and replace them with professionals that are trained in mentoring and providing support to our students. The police are not the ones to do this work. We need caring, not intimidation. We need understanding and kindness, not a show of force. Many minority communities distrust the police, and that distrust is also present in the children of these communities. Being a young person in today's society is hard enough without adding another level of stress. Thank you. Our next, uh, comment is from Meg Hummon, who is a South Salem resident. Dear School Board, having school resource officers in our schools was a single response to many problems, most not related to law enforcement. It has proven to have unintended negative consequences, and our students are telling us that they do not feel safer. Our taxes could support other responses that have proven effective elsewhere and that fit our objectives for our schools, our teachers, and our students. There's an old saying about a play, if there's a gun present in the first act, it will go off in the third act. That is not a good way to approach education. Our next comment is from Alan Scott of Salem. He says, please reconsider the need for these 24J-funded positions. I think that money could be better spent on counseling or other positive support staff. Our next public comment is from Shandra Tim. Hello, concerned Salem citizen here. I hope that during the meeting today regarding Salcais School Budgets, you would, you consider ending SRO programs and police contracts. Police presence in the schools do not contribute to an environment of safety, especially to the students of color. We could reinvest into resources that do make the students and staff feel supported. We need funds to go toward wraparound services, restorative justice, and mental, emotional, behavioral support systems. Our next comment is from Angelique Prater, and she is a graduate of South Salem High School. Um, okay. Hello, my name is Angelique Prater, and I'm a 2020 graduate from South Salem High School. Recently, Christie Perry, our superintendent, has made public statements about her commitment to find ways to actively demonstrate anti-racism. However, as a student of color, I do not believe that being anti-racist is having a few trainings or having a few meetings with educators. In my experience, all of the racism in the Salem Kaiser School District has been systemically perpetuated. My peers and I come to almost every single school board meeting where we testify against the school-to-prison pipeline. My comrade Tony has given you his piece from Teen Vogue on the school-to-prison pipeline. Yet every time we are met with the school board members and a superintendent that ignores us, we give our speeches and we are met with no response. Or if we have a response, it is school board members like Marty Hyen who interrupt us, which, might I add, she is a school board member that takes pictures with literal white supremacist groups. The members of our school board, who have their jobs because of us, consistently push us to the side. You ignore our experiences. You ignore the fact that the existence of systems like the police or school resource officers in our schools creates a direct path for students of color and students in poverty to end up in prison. Some of my peers have even, even have siblings that are currently incarcerated because of this pipeline. How can you commit to anti-racism for publicity during the Black Lives Matter movement but actively ignore youth of color in your district when they have been speaking up about their experiences for years? My peers have had very different experiences with the police than I have. They are pulled out of class by school resource officers, targeted because of their records, and the officers instigate issues with them. However, the police have never had a reason to target me until my final years in high school. I was always the tokenized person of color at my school because I was able to maintain high academic standing while having undocumented parents. But when I began advocating for justice and trying to, trying to create equality in my school, I became a target for police. As walkouts for environmental sustainability, racial justice, or transgender rights, my principal would ask the police officers to follow me all the way to the Capitol. It made a space where youth of color in my school did not feel that they could advocate for justice in these walkouts because they felt that the police would do something to them. The police became a barrier to improving conditions in our school, and they still are. If you are genuinely committed to being anti-racist, you would be willing to take direct action against the systems that perpetuate racism in your school district. As you know, the Portland School Board voted to defund school resource officers in the schools earlier this week. Today, I am here to ask that our school board does just the same. Defund the presence of police officers in our school. Replace police officers with mental health resources, more counselors, and culturally competent classes. Um, and I would just like to apologize right now, um, because I remembered that our translator asked me to speak slowly during the public comments, and I am afraid that I am not honoring her request. So moving forward, I will, um, I will try to ensure that I speak slower so that our translators, who are doing the live stream in Spanish right now, have an opportunity to translate that. Our next comment is from Alondra Sanchez. Hi, my name is Alondra. I'm fourteen years old, and this is not my first time speaking to you about the concerns I have in my school district. The toxic stress my peers and I have felt in Salem Kaiser Schools because of the constant policing is no secret. The harassment that I have felt during the school years at the hands of security guards and teaching staff caused me to be here today because I shouldn't have experienced that trauma in the first place. Policing has been used as a tool to threaten students of color. I personally have experienced being criminalized for simply not turning in my work on time, even though I was going through a lot. Instead of being met with empathy, this district pushes students further and further into the school-to-prison pipeline. The hypercriminalization we face has been constantly ignored by you, and this has caused youth their lives. Police around the country and local police have shown their true color. They have proven that they are not here to protect people of color, and our communities have known this for a long time. This is why we demand that we, that our school district divests all of the funds that go into police, SROs, and policing instead of improving education for students, because we do not need cops in schools. We will no longer stand to support the systems that kill black and brown people and push us to the margins. It is time, you guys, to take responsibility and accountability for the harm that you have caused to our communities. I am calling all of you out right now and demanding that you need to do the right thing. Our next public comment is from Erica Perkins. With current events upending our global response to a pandemic, everyone is a bit flustered and fatigued, both mentally and physically, let alone out of the loop. Please consider extending your budget vote so you can really weigh in on all the possible options and make the best choices for our city. Today, more than ever, our community wants to support. Let's consider their involvement as needed, consider it experienced and valid. Please hear the unified voice of the people and let us be heard. Our next public comment is from Hannah Margerson, um, and she says, hello, my name is Hannah Jen Su. I grew up in the Salcais School System. I am emailing to express my interest that you cut or cut your contract with the Salem Police Department and SRO program. We know that this is doable because we have seen Portland Public Schools do this, and we, the people, are begging that you follow through with this with our Salem schools. We have seen police brutality across the country through our entire lives and have seen it escalate over the last few weeks. We are asking that you cut these programs and instead use the money to pay for counselors, social workers, and community building and support programs instead. Salem police are only required four hundred hours of training. We could better use this budget to hire people who have degrees in social work, who have spent years and lifetimes devoting themselves to building and supporting community. Our next public comment is from Tanner Russ, who says, to whom this may concern, I am calling on you to dramatically reduce the police budget and reallocate it into the community in more efficient, less violent ways. It's become clear over the last two weeks that police cannot be trusted to protect the citizenry or their constitutional rights. Black Lives Matter, as does the right to peacefully assemble and protest a system that is found to be unjust and corrupt. Please defund the police, invest it in the community, particularly in the community of color. We need to do better for the most vulnerable among us. The next, uh, communication, uh, public comment is from Leah DeVito, and she says, I know this year has been full of challenges, and as a district, you have worked tirelessly to overcome those challenges. As a resident, I appreciate your support for our students during the pandemic. However, we are in yet another moment of heightened racial awareness in America. While we collectively mourn the murders of our black Americans and navigate the path forward, it is absolutely critical to consider the impacts of these traumatic, modern events and their direct connection to black American history on students of all races. Not only do we need to address the emotional state of students and staff, but also make changes that create real positive impacts on our students' lives and collective futures. I, Leah DeVito, as a concerned community member to children in the school district, am calling on Salem Kaiser School District to ensure that there is a safe learning environment for every student by terminating your contract with our police department. It has been four hundred years since America has been addressing race, anti-racism, and inequality, and I am disappointed in the lack of efforts by the district's faculty and school board to take deliberate anti-racist actions within board and academic communications with parents, students, staff, and faculty. To be clear, ignoring the injustices of widespread normalized racism and intolerance of others were simply making a statement- and intolerance of others for simply making a statement is not an option. Science and research has proven time and again that black students are significantly more likely to receive discipline resulting in removal from the classroom, suspensions, expulsions, referrals to law enforcement, and more than their peers, which has been directly linked to incarceration rates. Accountability is one of the only known factors that leads to behavioral changes in people who occupy positions of power. As a K-12 educator, you are a trusted leader, mentor, and role model to countless students who will grow up to be the next generation of Americans. We expect you to teach and lead by example, exhibit kindness, provide resources, and be a safe space for students. From here on, anything less will be considered failing to do your job. Your schools have the obligation to serve the students which attend them. At this moment, serving your black students and students of color means openly and loudly affirming your stance as an anti-racist institution, condemning all types of violence against black and people of color in America, offering resources for both education and traumatized individuals, and committing your district to reconsidering how its budget, policies, and curriculums can be updated to meet the significant moment. Most importantly, you can ensure that your attitudes and actions are consistently anti-racist as a standard. Conversations about race profoundly affect our students' lives, and they have the power to influence our society's collective strength. I ask you to please end Salem Kaiser School District's contract with the police. Our next public comment is from Jim Shepke of Salem. Dear School Board, I want to add my voice to the many voices telling you that we must end the school resource officer program this year. Based with the prospect of having to reduce your teaching faculty in the months ahead, I can't imagine how you can justify the continued presence of police in our schools. Your students have told you that school resource officers are not wanted and only contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline. Policing schools is a classic example of Maslow's hammer. When all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Our leaders have promoted police as the answer to every societal problem, and as a result, police departments across our country have become bloated empires run by self-serving police unions. Have a problem with homelessness, hire more police. Drug addiction, hire more police. School behavior problem, police are the answer. Everything looks like a nail. It's time to admit this was a mistake. Your students have been telling you. Please listen to them. Our next public comment is from Rochelle Santiago of Salem. Dear SKSD Board Directors, as the district moves forward to create a trauma-informed education system, you need to get the police out of the schools. Take the funds currently budgeted for school resource officers and use that money for teachers, mental health staff, or even aides that are trained to be trauma-informed and can work with our students to develop their full potential and not make them feel threatened like police make many students feel, especially our students of color. The brain science is clear. Students cannot learn to their full potential under this stress. We need to make our schools about education and feelings safe. No police in schools. Our next public comment is from Marisol Espinoza. For the Salem Kaiser School Board, as an older brother of three current students and a former student of the Salem Kaiser School District, I wholeheartedly believe that Salem Kaiser should end their intergovernmental agreements that establish and fund school resource officers. Knowing the history of policing in communities of color and understanding how the school-to-prison pipeline functions, it would be short-sighted to continue funding this relationship. Officers, no matter their capacity, often pose a threat to students who are non-white, LGBTQ+, and/or are undocumented. In the interest of putting students first, funding should instead be allocated toward healthier school lunches, comprehensive culturally knowledgeable school counselors, art and music classes, or for better equipment and educational resources that will actually benefit the future of our students. Growing up in Salem Kaiser, I saw the disparity in how students of color, especially those from low-income areas, were treated much more harshly than their white peers. I remember being taught with outdated textbooks that were falling apart at North Salem. I remember my overworked high school counselors being unable to properly help me with college resources. These memories represent how I was failed in different ways by this district, and I refuse to see the same happen to my younger siblings. I ask that the school board take a step in the right direction of putting our students first by ending their relationship with school resource officers. Our next comment is from Catalin Midetook. And it says, hello, I am a Salem resident, and I believe we need to get police out of our schools and end the school-to-prison pipeline. I respectfully demand that you end the intergovernmental agreement that establishes and funds school resource officers and move this money to the contingency fund. We don't need police in our schools. They are places of learning, not prison. And then we have two more comments to share. The next is from Sean Nikas of Salem. Hello, I understand the Salem Kaiser School District will be facing real budget constraints. The pandemic is stressing state, local, and business budgets throughout our state and school district. Is no different. This means our school board members will be facing some hard choices. The ongoing violence focused on black and brown Americans has finally come to a head, and our whole nation is dealing with how to deliver justice free from racist outcomes. This will not be easy, but I can think of little else, which is so deserving of our time and effort. I look forward to a brave examination and bold proposals from our school board. Please end the intergovernmental agreement that establishes and funds school resource officers and move this money to the contingency fund. Our final email public comment is from Gary Miller and Holly Oaks Miller of Salem. We encourage the school board to listen to the voices of our community and use this moment to create more equitable schools for our black and brown youth. We support Latinos, Unidos, Siempre, and other community organizations and activists in their demands that the board completely divest from police in Salem Kaiser Schools and invest those funds in resources that better support black and brown students. I will turn it over to Erin.
Okay, great. We have had two people submit video comments, and so I'm going to be sharing my screen here. The first one is from Sarah Evans. Let me just make sure it's, please, okay, here we go.
Hello, my name is Sarah Evans, and I am the parent of two children in Anglewood Elementary School, and I live in Salem. This week, the Portland Public Schools Superintendent made the brave decision to remove armed police officers from their schools. I'm testifying to urge you to do the same for Salem Kaiser Schools. There are many studies that show police officers in schools actually make them less safe, particularly for students of color. When students are arrested, expelled, or otherwise disciplined by police, not only do they miss school time, they frequently stop coming to school because it is not a place where they feel safe or welcome. They're also not getting the real help they need to deal with the issues leading to their misbehavior, issues that would be better met by social workers or counselors rather than police. Research shows that restorative justice practices, instead of punitive police actions, are much more effective for working with students who are causing disciplinary issues. When students sit down and face the issue directly, hear from the people they affected, and work together with their teachers and peers to come up with ways to make reparations for the harm that they caused, they are much more impacted and much less likely to cause problems in the future. They also feel like their school cares about them. My two sons are currently attending Anglewood Elementary School. They've had their share of disciplinary issues due to their struggles with ADHD and mental health issues, but they are white, and I fully recognize that our family will be treated much differently in the long run than if we were black or brown. I fear for their black or brown peers and what will happen to them when they're older and start to be seen as a problem that needs to be removed by police. I heard just this week from several people related to the school district that our superintendent supports taking direct action against racism. I hope you will demonstrate your commitment by taking the action to remove police from our schools. Thank you for listening.
Okay, and I am going to see, one second here.
Hello, my name is Virginia Stapleton, and I live here in Salem, Oregon. I have two kids in the Salem Kaiser School District and serve on the school board's budget committee. Many people have spoken out today about removing police from our schools, and this may leave some people feeling uncomfortable and vulnerable, and I just want to speak to that tonight. If this is you, I ask that you lean into those feelings. That feeling of unease and vulnerability is something that our black and brown community feels every day. Lean in. Please do not ignore this. I would even suggest that these feelings are evidence of your position of power and that now you have a chance to understand how other people feel. I want to remind people that justice isn't free. It will cost you. I fear that many people right now are speaking out. They might even be attending rallies or participating in marches, making signs and sharing memes, which are all really great. But I fear that when it will cost them more is when we're going to start getting pushback. And I want you to know and remember that justice is not free, and we must realize that it's going to cost us. It's going to cost you in time and energy and money, and it will cost you a bruised ego, and it'll hurt your pride, for sure. You might even be asked to have hard conversations with people you love and are close to, and sometimes that's going to result in painful, strained relationships. You might have a feeling of loss of power or control, and that's all to be expected. It's all very good and healthy right now. It's what we need. I encourage you to grapple with these perceived losses and then let them go. Come and stand alongside those in our minority groups and become an ally. Sit under the teachings of people of color. Study, learn, practice self-examination, humble yourself, and stick with it. Like me, you will be learning and unlearning for a very long time, and it's vital that we don't give up. I understand that many of you have had positive interactions with school resource officers and see value in those interactions and relationships. Know that this is not about one specific officer. This is about systemic racism in our institutions. By making the argument that you have had these good interactions is a form of white centering, and it needs to stop. This is about hearing and understanding that many people of color, they have not had the same positive interactions. This is about putting their needs in front of our wants. This is just one small area that we can create change, and there's still lots of work to be done on many fronts. Hiring teachers and administrators of color, changing our school board to look more like the population we serve, and getting more community involvement at every school board meeting. These are all things that we can do to help. I support and stand with our communities of color as they ask for change. Please end the school-to-prison pipeline by removing school resource officers from our schools and shift that money to programs that are proven to help the most vulnerable among us. Our officers will still be there for us when we need them, just a phone call away. This is an amazing opportunity to recreate the world in which we live. Thank you.
Great. So we actually have a third video, but we've got to change the format so that we can share it. So I will begin reading the comments that were submitted through the forum online. The format is a little bit hard, so I may need a couple seconds between comments to make sure it hasn't already been submitted via email. I also shared with Jessie, we do have some comments related to the proclamation that we'll share when we resume the board meeting after the budget hearing. That was an error on my part, so I apologize for that, but we will make sure we get to those public comments as well. And our next public comment is from Cindy Gaten. Hello, I'm Cindy. I'm a community member. I graduated from this school district. I have family that attended this district, and I work with youth who attend the district as well. This is my community, and I know it like I know the palm of my hand. There has been an ongoing generational harm and trauma that this district has caused students. The time to take accountability for this is long overdue. Police in and out of schools have proven to only perpetuate terror toward black and brown communities time and time again. The ongoing criminalization, harassment, and hyper-awareness that students are forced to live with causes an unnecessary amount of toxic stress. You cannot, as individuals, be stating that you care about this district or its students of color if you ignore this very real issue. I am deeply worried about the lives of future youth and the lack of equitable leadership this entire board has shown so far. We must completely defund policing in schools and divest the $20 million spent on policing in this district toward positive resources. We must reinvest these funds in counseling services and culturally proficient staff. I suggest you really look at the letter we have presented to you today and think before you brush away our very important ask. Many community members in and out of Salem have agreed to this letter showing solidarity with youth of color with their meaningful actions, and it's time for you to do the same. The next public comment is from Raquel Marquez Guerrero, and she's of Salem. Hello, members of the board. My name is Raquel Marquez, and I have attended Scott Elementary, Waldo Middle, and McKay High School, which have predominantly, which have been predominantly low-income students of color. And for as long as I can remember, there has always been police on campus. Recently, my brother had an experience with policing in our schools. He shared with me that he had been pulled out of class and sent to be checked for drugs by the security guards. I was angered not only because they checked his backpack and him physically, but because this was allowed to happen. My brother was pulled out of class and lost quality time of learning simply because he went to use the restroom at a certain timeframe. This is not the way to treat students. What does this say about our priorities as a school district? We need to stop preparing our students of color for prisons and instead prepare them to succeed. We demand that the funds that go into policing be reallocated instead in more counselors, college readiness, and extracurriculars, especially at McKay, where there is already overcrowding and underfunding in many of our programs. Policing in our schools does not tackle any problems, and instead, we can fund other programs that will help our students succeed. Our schools are meant to educate our students and make them feel safe, not to treat them as if they're criminals. Stop funding policing in our schools and start investing in our students of color. Thank you. Our next public comment is from Chisela Espinoza of Salem. Instead of spending money on police and security, we should spend the money on providing more classroom space in low-income schools that are overpopulated. Hire social workers to help students in distress instead of criminalizing them and invest in a better education. The next comment is from Elizabeth Swan of Kaiser. Members of the school board, for a short time, I worked in Sped in a 24J middle school. I am writing to voice my support for the end of 24J's monetary and physical relationship with police. In my brief time working in the district, I saw the negative effects of policing in schools. I saw Sped students who, at the age of 13, were under constant surveillance by police, by SROs, parole officers, and community officers in their school, their neighborhood, their home. No matter how students' regular contacts with police may have started, what immediately happened next was that these students lost their freedom to succeed in school. With police watching their every move, they lost their freedom to fail, and therefore, they lost their freedom to learn. Here are the facts. Students are watching. They are watching as Salem police are being filmed working with armed white supremacists. They are watching as Salem police in full riot gear chase down unarmed BIPOC, Black Indigenous, People of Color youth, their families, their friends. 24J schools will never be a safe learning environment for Black, Indigenous, and People of Color youth as long as police are funded by schools and present in schools. Do the right thing. Our next
All of the public comments?
No. Our next public comment is from Crystal Espinoza of Salem. I've been a parent with five children who have all received education or are currently receiving from the Salem Kaiser School District. My oldest graduated high school in 2014, and my youngest is currently in second grade. So believe me when I say that I have experience in this district as a parent. I absolutely will not stand idly by while the school board continues to invest in a relationship with police officers in this district. The money that is being put towards school resource officers is being robbed of my children's education. I've seen them bring home worn, outdated textbooks. I've seen them become visibly upset each year because their music teachers have had to because their music teachers have had to break it to them that music was losing more of their funding. I urge the school board to divest all funds from police officers in schools. Instead, reinvest in empowering students through education. Our next public comment is from Isaiah Allen Swan of Kaiser. Members of the board, I am an IA with 24J in the process of earning a Master of Arts in Teaching and an elementary teaching license. I comment here in solidarity with the concerns of 24J's Black Indigenous people of color community regarding the role police serve in our schools. And yes, 24J's community is Black Indigenous people of color. Our district's most recent ODE report card confirms that less than half of our students identify as white. You've heard or will hear many statistics and numbers summarizing our district's usage of school resource officers. I will not recap them. Instead, I will state boldly that it would be the height of arrogance, ignorance, and folly to believe that our local police represent, in any sense, an exception to the nationwide norm. U.S. police affirmed daily with every tear gas canister, rubber slug, baton swing, shot fired, every protester hospitalized or left dead in the street. Our police, as they stand, are not capable of serving Black Indigenous people of color communities. Salem's police have confirmed, as much in their recent activities downtown, in the manner they casually made national news by enabling the activities of armed white supremacists while violently suppressing and arresting unarmed youth of color. The cold fact is that we, as a school district, as educators, can no longer claim to care about the academic, physical, social, and emotional well-being of our Black Indigenous people of color students as long as we pay police to be present in our schools. That is the long and the short of it, the blunt moral fact. Please choose our students. Our next public comment is from Kobe Walker of Salem. I have a son that will be entering the school district in the coming years. I find discomfort in knowing our school district is funding millions of dollars into policing the students instead of putting that money towards comprehensive education. As a parent, how am I supposed to find comfort in knowing that our district values a relationship with police officers more than the actual education of my child and the children of others? I need the district to do what is right and divest from funding school resource officers. Our next public comment is from Jenny Johnson of Salem. As a parent of a future Salem Kaiser district student, I believe our district should divest all funds that go toward police and instead reinvest those funds back into improving our education. Police presence in our school is unacceptable because it supports an infrastructure that criminalizes our students. Our district funds $20 million annually to police our students. Imagine how much greater improvement can be made in the students' lives if we reinvested that money toward genuine care for our students. As a former student of the district, I remember walking into school every day and immediately being reminded of the police presence that was there. It was uncomfortable being treated as if I was a criminal for seeking an education. I ask that the school board do what is right and divest from funding school resource officers. Our next public comment is from Shay Bodine Watkins, who is a district employee. Having worked for Salem Kaiser Public Schools for over six years, previously a teacher and now a mentor, I have been impressed by the district's recent leadership in the call for dismantling systemic racism. Now it is imperative that the school district divest funds from police presence in schools, SROs, and reinvest into greater areas of need to better support our students with strong foundation they deserve. Salem Kaiser invests about $20 million into policing students every year, and evidence does not show the presence of SROs makes schools any safer. It can impact, the presence of an SRO at a school can create feelings of being singled out, feeling unsafe, and being racially profiled for Black and other students of color. We must end the intergenerational harm done to students and reinvest in systems of counseling support and, more important, restorative justice. Thank you. Our next public comment is from Sandra Hernandez. Oh, that one was emailed, sorry. Our next public comment is from Byron Harmon of Salem. In the days since George Floyd was murdered by police in Minneapolis, our country has come to some stark realizations about the nature of police officers in our communities. Here in Salem, the police have shown overt favoritism for armed white supremacists while showing a hard-handed approach for protesters objecting to police murder of U.S. citizens. So we must question the presence of these officers in our schools and what opportunity costs exist for that funding. I ask that the school board end all resource officer positions held in Salem Kaiser schools and shift those resources to counseling staff for our students. Our next public comment is from Paul Boers of Salem. It is time to remove all police officers from all Salem Kaiser schools. Research has now shown that police presence makes schools less safe, especially for students of color. What's more, they facilitate connections to juvenile detention, which creates a school-to-prison pipeline that undermines SKPS's non-discrimination work, not to mention your work to prepare students for the world. Salem Kaiser Public Schools are pillars of our community, and your staff make our cities better places to live. Please make this a change to enhance this work, and thank you for all that you do. Oh, and a big thumbs up for the Pride Month resolution. The next public comment is from Snarfy Nudson of Salem. I am writing to you as a parent of three and as a member of the community. I urge you, before you lock in your budgets for the next year, to defund any money set aside for the police department and invest that money into better resources for our children. Instead of more police presence at our schools, I ask for more school counselors, dedicated social workers, and after-school programs to keep our students engaged and safe. Listening to and protecting our children could not be more crucial in these uncertain times. I believe that unarmed, trauma-informed counselors are better equipped to hear, protect, and direct our students to safety than a police officer. Thank you for listening. Our next public comment is from Beth Colazar, who is from Salem. I read that a few members are trying to sever ties with Salem Police Department, and I have some opinions on where those funds could be used. COVID has shown us that we need smaller class size and we need more mental health specialists. Trained counselors specifically for children and youth are needed, not for help with which classes to take, but help and support with mental health. If those relationships were established, more kids could have been reached during the COVID pandemic. My kids shared with me that they never talked with their assigned counselor. I also asked my kids what they wished they had at school. Their answer was more choices for elective classes. Right now, you have the elective spread out throughout the high schools to save money. This does not benefit the children. They need, they need high school to have the opportunity to take several different electives to help, to help them determine what they enjoy and what they are good at to help them decide their career path or college major. Having limited choices for classes takes away from their experiences. Thank you. Our next public comment is from Alexander Korsunsky of Salem. I attended McKinley Howard Street and graduated from South in 2008. Salem Kaiser Schools served me well. Anyways, now I'm a PhD candidate, a social scientist, and among the things I've researched is the power of organized students who stand up and demand that public education work for everyone and point out that working-class students and students of color can only succeed when their communities succeed. This is why I am writing in solidarity with the demands articulated by Luce. I am writing to demand that, in light of recent events and the vast body of social scientific and education research on the school-to-prison pipeline, that the district's budget remove any and all funding for police and similar private security, and that this money be reinvested in programs that actually benefit our kids and youth that actually keep them safe. That means more counselors, enough so that they can realistically meet the needs of kids who are struggling. That means more ethnic studies programs and more funding for arts programs and culturally responsive after-school programs, the sorts of programs that let kids feel like they have a place at their schools, that show them that the school cares about them, that empower them to become the leaders our community needs. This means shifting from a model of school discipline that emphasizes punishment and compliance with one that focuses on restorative justice. Cops have no place in schools. They must be removed. We have about a dozen more public comments that we'll go through. The next is from Carly Wright of Salem. As the parent of a child who attends school in Salem, I am writing to urge Salem Kaiser Public Schools to remove police officers from all schools in our district. Research studies have shown that policing schools actually makes schools less safe, especially for minority students. Additionally, students reprimanded by police officers at school are less likely to feel safe at school, and as a result, are less likely to excel academically and less likely to graduate. I advocate for transferring funding currently used for police officers in schools towards school counselors, social workers, and nurses. Additionally, I would like to share my support for recognizing LGBTQ Pride Month with an official proclamation. Thank you for working to make Salem Kaiser Schools safe and nurturing for all students. Our next public comment is from Kira Nguyen-Mannahan of Kaiser. I'm asking the committee to sever ties with the Salem Police Department. School policing sets children up for the school-to-prison pipeline. ACLU has this document discussing Oregon in particular. You can save children from the prison system and from fearing school by allocating funds to resources that will actually help them, such as counseling or school tutors. I want the children in our community to feel safe and be given fair opportunities to learn. Children thrive when they are taken care of, not when they are scared. Keep police out of our schools. Our next public comment is from Audrey Von Maluski of Salem, and Audrey is a staff member. I want to ask that the Salem Kaiser School District consider ending the SRO program in our schools similar to the steps taken by the Portland Public School District last week. Student and community advocates have repeatedly testified to this board about the issue of police in schools and the school-to-prison pipeline. Ending the agreements that fund the school resource officer program will free up budget dollars for other resources that impact our students far more positively on a daily basis, such as retaining teachers or classified staff and hiring more counselors, psychologists, and social workers. In our schools, we need specialists with expert training in mental health, cultural competency, college and career counseling, social-emotional learning, restorative justice, behavior support, and more. A police officer does not provide those services. Moreover, a single SRO in a school does not, by themselves, adequately improve school safety. For many students, the presence of an armed officer actually increases feelings of non-belonging and danger in the school. Students, families, and teachers all want more wraparound services for our community that will prevent violence and improve outcomes for students. Ending the SRO program honors the real need of our school community and allows money to be spent in areas that uphold our district vision for equity more clearly. The next, the next public comment is from Desta Serene of Salem. We need to remove police presence in all of our schools. Seeing police cars regularly parked outside, having their own parking space, immediately makes the school feel less safe, not more. Studies have shown that police, rather than school counselors and principals being involved in student matters, results in more punitive actions. It is scary for students, and in some cases in the country, have resulted in officers violently attacking students for minor disruptions in class. More care needs to be given to what might go, what might be going on at home if a student is being bullied and acting out, et cetera, rather than sending them on a path thinking that they are bad, a bad person needing to be punished. School is for learning, not fear. The next comment is from Maria Janelle Young of Salem. I am a parent of a student at McKinley Elementary School and a member of their PTC. I have already been upset with the lack of diversity in our teachers and the programs. I plan to help enhance the role I play in my, I believe she meant role. I plan to help enhance the role I play in my community and school district. I would like to urge Salem Kaiser School District to end the SRO program with Salem Police Department. I call upon Kristi Perry to use this money to support and enhance the lives and education of people of color in our community. Follow the lead of Portland and end this program. It has been proving that although some students feel safer with their presence, many are filled with trauma and fear. We can all agree that trauma is something that distracts students from learning. If our goal is to help students learn and feel safe within our schools, this is a most. If every child doesn't feel safe in our schools, then we, as a community, are not doing our job to support people of color in our neighborhoods. Thank you for your time. The next public comment is from Janet Lorenzen of Salem. I want you to end the practice of police officers, school resource officers, SROs, in schools because according to academic research, it enables the school-to-prison pipeline, criminalization of minor conduct. Police in schools do not follow proper police conduct rules. There is no evidence that SROs deter violence or school shootings, and SROs cannot act as good mentors when they are associated with the formalization of student discipline. Students of color in Salem have also complained about biased treatment. Researchers recommend funding social workers instead. Their presence is correlated with much better student outcomes. The next public comment is from Sarah Crawford of Salem. I am writing today urging you to sever ties with the Salem Police Department and reinvest that money into new mental health services and additional counselors to serve our student body. The safety and well-being of our minority students, our Black and Latinx population in particular, is far, far more important than the alleged protection of armed police on school ground. We can't allow the Salem Kaiser School District to be active participants in the school-to-prison pipeline. The students in our community deserve a safe, free education. They don't deserve to turn into another statistic. We must remove the Salem Police Department from our schools. Our next public comment is from Jessica Jones of Kaiser. As tensions rise between police and the public because of police brutality and racism, I feel like it is crucial to get the officers out of our schools. Black and Brown students potentially being a target for these officers is absolutely not okay. Systemic racism should not exist, but it does. We need it to not exist in our schools where Black and Brown students are falling victim to it. Please get police officers out of our schools. Our next public comment is from Anna Lynn Scheller-Munk. Recently, Salem Police Department made headlines for siding with white supremacist groups over other humans in our community. I seriously question the validity of having representatives of the police department active in our schools after hearing news of this accident, incident, excuse me. Please reconsider your current agreements with Salem Police Department. We either need to quit having their representatives in our schools or see serious changes on the force. Thank you. The next comment is from Emmanuel Macias of Salem. Defund police budget programs and reallocate those funds to direct student support programs. The next comment is from Julianne Jackson of Salem. In light of recent events that have taken place between the city of Salem and its residents, i.e. videos of police officers cavorting with known white supremacy groups, Cavorting with known white supremacy groups, et cetera. I would like to urge you to consider ending your contract with Salem Police Department and find another alternative to having armed officers in our schools. In an educational environment, this is not necessary. And we must send a very clear message to the students of color in our district that we stand with them. As well as sending a very clear message to Salem Police Department. Our schools need these funds now more than ever in the wake of COVID nineteen. We do not need police to police our children. Is this something that the school district is considering as a savings to our budget? The next comment is from Margaret Stevens of Salem. My suggestion is regarding school police officers, SROs. Consider defunding SROs and move the money to the contingency fund. Or to another line item that's already included and that supports equity and breaking the school to prison pipeline. The next comment is from Peter Sorensen of Salem. My name is Peter Sorensen and I am a resident of Salem. While I don't have children, I am deeply invested in the future and climate of our community, which starts in our schools and with our youth. I am writing to ask that you remove police from our schools. School based police officers are a distracting and intimidating presence for many of our students. And lead to the over penalizing of students who need additional support rather than punitive actions. If we want our students to be safe, let's increase the ratio of guidance counselors and academic support assistants. And improve in school programming in the areas that help to engage them in the classroom. Promote creativity, activity. Inspire intellectual curiosity and equip them for civic life. Our schools have been an astounding and positive source of support during COVID nineteen. Offering learning tools and meals for students who need them. Let's be equally brave in the face of this other equally pressing issue of over policing. The next comment is from Joshua Dolar of Salem. I request that our public, our public schools commit to defunding the budget given to the Salem Police Department. And reappropriate that money to funding programs within the school system that can educate and keep our children safe. Data has shown that increased police presence in schools does nothing for keeping our youth safer. And only increases the amount of petty crimes that our youth, specifically brown and black youth. Get taken out of school and arrested for. The budget of our school district should be focused on funding programs and allowing school to be a safe place for our youth. To get all the education and support that they need to succeed in the world. By funding the Salem Police Department, we are taking away vital resources from teachers and programs that need the money the most. Please help move us to a society where we don't use the police as our answer to all of our problems. Thank you. Our next comment is from Christine Shanaburger of Salem. My name is Christine Shanaburger and I am a taxpaying resident of Salem. While I don't have children, I work in education and am deeply invested in the future and climate of our community. Which starts with our schools and with our youth. I am writing to ask that you remove police from our schools. School based police officers are a distracting and intimidating presence. For many of our students and lead to the over penalizing of students who need additional support rather than punitive actions. If we want our students to be safe, let's increase the ratio of guidance counselors and academic support assistants. And improve in school programming in areas that help to engage them in the classroom. Promote creativity, inspire intellectual curiosity and equip them for civic life. Our schools have been an astounding and positive source of support during COVID nineteen. Offering learning tools and meals for students who need them. Let's be equally brave in the face of this other equally pressing issue of over policing. The next agenda or public comment is from Kayla Scrillan Broccoli. I apologize on the name of Salem. As the mother of a young child who will attend Salem Kaiser Schools. I write to urge Salem Kaiser Public Schools to remove police officers from all schools in our district. Research shows that police officers in schools actually make schools less safe, especially for black boys. Students reprimanded by police officers at school are less likely to feel safe at school. And as a result, are less likely to excel academically and less likely to graduate. I advocate for transferring the funding currently used for police officers in schools. Towards school counselors, social workers and nurses. Thank you for working to make Salem Kaiser Schools safe and nurturing for all students. And then we are nearing the end. We have a comment from Vicky Falcon Vasquez. My name is Vicky Falcon Vasquez. I am part of Mono a Mono Family Center. Latinos, Latinos Unidos Siempre supporter and old member. I am a mother of a sixteen year old student at McNary High School. I myself am a graduate of McNary, class of two thousand and three. As a student of color during my time, school had many challenges. I have spoken in the past to the board about my experience and how funds and resources. Have not been used specifically for bilingual English language learners and students of color. As you can see, not much has changed since then. I am saddened because during middle school at Whittaker, my son had to listen to comments such as build a wall and go back to your country. That was the beginning of a long road to healing his trauma of not belonging, feeling lonely, suffering anxiety and depression. During high school, his state worsened and although his counselor and music director helped us in the beginning. I had to navigate with this struggle all on my own. He is finally in a better state, yet school had become a difficult environment to the point that he didn't want to attend anymore. My son is intelligent and extremely talented in music. It broke my heart to know that school has its challenges to include and support my son in meaningful and intentional ways. I fully support Lucy's demands in allocating these funds to teachers, caseworkers, psychologists. And community organizations that can support all of us. And the final comment that I have is from Andrea Doyle Hugmeyer of Salem. And it appears Andrea's comment is related to our Pride Month proclamation. So with that last public comment that I shared. That concludes all of the comments that have been submitted for the budget hearing.
I do have the video from Ross ready.
Yes, we do have one more video.
Good evening Chair Hyun Superintendent Perry and board members. My name is Ross Worsen Druber and I'm a parent in this with three children in the Salem Kaiser School District. And tonight I'd like to talk about eight B, the key performance indicators. Earlier this year, I submitted testimony concerning the fake scores given to my students, to my children. Two of them and I have yet to receive any word back from the district on why those errant assessment scores. Were given to my children and if they are included in any of the other scores and what the algorithm is that produced those results. Now that a hundred percent of the students in Salem Kaiser have opted out of the martyr battles assessment for this year. Can we expect all the students' scores to be extrapolated in the same manner? And if that's the case, why are we paying for these tests? Because they are not community outcome measurements. They cannot be performed in our community right now. They're useless. Are we still paying for those? And I'd like to talk the next about the budget.
Okay, that is all that was on that video.
There's not any more to that video?
I will check, but I didn't see anything else on there.
Now, okay, so now that we're done with the public testimony for the twenty 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 one budget. Do we have any comments from our budget committee?
This is Levy. I'm still processing my thoughts a little bit, so if you could come back to me later.
Sure, yeah. Who else with us from budget committee Adriana? Or Jacqueline? Do either of you have comments?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like Levy, this would be the last. The last one up. You have anything you want to say real quick before we close the budget here?
Sorry, are you asking me if I want to go now?
Yeah, because then we're going to
Yeah, I So I me Yeah, this is sorry, this really I have, yeah, I just have a lot of emotions right now. So I know there are some people out there in this country that think this is just because of what's going on right now, but you know, this is a really it goes back to the entire history of the country and before. For me personally, I've been in this country in Salem. For about for about, you know, almost thirty years now. And I have that much time of of worth of history of stories that I can share with you that are the same as everything that's been shared. So it's a, it's an issue that's that I feel very personally. And I appreciate the comments Superintendent Perry made. I think I would, what I would say is I would encourage the board to engage in this conversation honestly. You're hearing a lot of comments from the community on this. And if if you're not ready to engage honestly in this conversation. Let the community know. Because if if a decision is not made tonight that goes with the comments that you've been hearing. Then the community needs to hear that the board will engage honestly in that conversation. And that it's not going to be a conversation that will get dragged out over many, many months or weeks. If without lacking that, I think you'll see it's gonna, yeah, it is, it will create more pain, I would say. I think that's all I have to say right now.
No, thank you, Levy. Yeah, you're definitely right. It's a lot to process. So thank you for being able to speak right away on that. And I believe just to touch on that, what Levy was saying. And for the community members who came here specifically for this. The, the plan was to have more community conversation with the the district, the board and our community. Is that correct, Christie?
Yeah, sorry, that that is correct. Yes. And it needs to be urgently.
Do we have a deadline for when we're planning to have something or do we know yet?
Well, I thought that I would get a plan together in the next day or two. And then kind of lay that out over the next weeks. I think what you as a group have to decide. Which I think that I think the engagement happens anyway. But what you as a group have to decide is do you take the vote tonight on the budget or do you hold till the twenty third? But again, if you vote tonight and take action tonight. You still have to engage in the I mean, and I know that's not what you're asking, you know, so yeah, there's it's, it's a lot of I think as Levy said, it's just a lot to process in this.
No, yeah, I totally agree. And I do want to ask, because I'm not sure on the procedure of this, just because we're currently in the budget hearing. Would we, if we decided to vote on it, we're not to vote on it tonight? Wouldn't that be in the actions items and not during the budget hearing? Is that correct?
Correct. So it probably the best, the best thing to do right now, Jesse, is to close the budget hearing. And then on to the next sections of the agenda. As a board, you can have this discussion during the budget process or the decision process.
That sounds good. Okay, so now that we've heard all the public comment and reports from the budget committee. I now will close the hearing. So the twenty 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 one budget hearing is now officially closed. Now right off the bat, now that we're back into the regular board meeting, I do want to say that we're going to push the just because of the length of the meetings. I mean, that's the benefit of us living in a democratic republic, you know, is that we get to hear people's voices. But with that being said, so that we don't go too late, we're going to move the reports. B and C, the key performance indicators and the executive of the T twelve. To our next meeting, which is going to be on June twenty third. Just in respect to everyone's time. And then we're going to hear the quick testimony about the testimony about the Pride Month proclamations. I believe there are two of them. Julianne, and then we're going to take a break until eight fifteen once those are done.
Thank you so much. Our first piece of public comment related to the proclamation is from Andrea Hugmeyer of Salem. My name is Andrea Hugmeyer and I am writing tonight as a community member, advocate and mother, asking you to approve the proclamation of June as Pride Month. At Willamette Excuse me. At Willamette University, I often work closely with LGBTQ students. There is a noticeable difference between those students who have had a childhood where they felt supported and valued. And the students who have experienced more discrimination and less validation of their identities. Over the years, I have appreciated that Salem Kaiser Schools have prioritized holistic care of our children. Where teachers and administrators seek to support children, knowing that their care fosters a positive educational path. As a mother, it is vital to our parenting that children know that they are loved. By approving this proclamation, you help underscore that love that love, making it known that our children are loved no matter what. At a time when kindness, diversity, education and liberation are of utmost importance. Please take this opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to our youth. And let them know that they are valued and celebrated in our community. Our next public comment comes from Hillary Arthur of Salem. As an LGBTQ family, we fully support and would also hope that Salem Kaiser School District recognizes National Pride Month. On behalf of all LGBTQ students, staff, faculty, families and community members. This is an opportunity for SKSD to show their solidarity with the LGBTQ community. And demonstrate the importance of inclusion for all students. And that concludes our public comment.
Perfect. Thank you. So we're going to take a quick five minute break. So let's all come back at eight fifteen for our action items. See you in a bit. But Marty Hyun has now joined the meeting with the rest of us.
From Idaho.
From Idaho, here, here. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad you're with us, Marty. Thank you for coming. Alrighty, so we're going to start off now that we've heard all the public comment regarding agenda items. We've had a budget hearing. Now we're going to be going into the action items. So the first one coming up is going to be approving the LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation. And of course, as Superintendent Perry said, you know, this as of is very relevant to today, simply just because the um, the LGBTQ, um, and the Black Lives Matter, uh, civil rights movements together are very intertwined. Uh, so it's very relevant to today. Um, and I would like to ask Sharon if you would be willing to read this.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm honored to read this. Salem Kaiser Public Schools LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation is as follows. Whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools shares in the belief that diversity is our greatest strength. And whereas Salem Kaiser Public Schools' commitment to equity means that student success will not be predicated nor predetermined by characteristics such as sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas our students and staff, including those who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer, have the right to a great public education experience that is free from intimidation, bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And whereas each year, the month of June honors the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall riots in Manhattan and the struggle for basic civil rights for the LGBTQ community. And whereas the National Education Association has included Pride Month in its list of commemorative months since nineteen ninety-five. And whereas we believe that Jason Collins, the first openly gay mayor, major American sports athlete, said openness may not be complete, may not completely disarm prejudice, but it is a good place to start. And whereas Pride Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about LGBTQ history and to honor the many LGBTQ American leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas LGBTQ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to youth who identify as non-LGBTQ. And whereas each episode of victimization of persons who identify as LGBTQ, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times more on average. Whereas a national study found that forty percent of transgendered adults reported having made a suicide attempt, with ninety-two percent of those individuals reported having attempted suicide before the age of twenty-five. And whereas having a gay-straight alliance reduces a child's risk of attempting suicide by fifty percent. And whereas students at school with gay-straight alliances experience less bullying around gender identity. And whereas federal law guarantees students the right to form gay-straight alliance clubs, with other non-curricular clubs exist. And whereas inclusion is a core value of our district, and the school board has a responsibility to oppose discrimination towards LGBTQ people in Oregon and the United States that helps to perpetuate high suicide rates. And whereas the school board is committed to helping end the crisis of suicide in our community. And whereas the school board is committed to creating a safe and welcoming school district for all students. And now therefore, the Salem Kaiser School District Board of Directors proclaims June two thousand twenty to be the LGBTQ Pride Month and urges our community to join us in celebrating our students and staff, regardless of gender, identity, or orientation. And I would move, uh, move approval of, uh, the LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation.
Second.
I second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Director Blasi, a second by Director Kylo. Um, do we have any board member comments? Uh, Director Chandigiri?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I really want to say I'm so honored. It's such a blessing that I get to sit here as a director of the school board, and I will be voting in support of this. This is because in nineteen ninety-six, when I came to this country with my wife and a little daughter, it was Dr. John Fryer, a board-certified psychiatrist, a gay man who welcomed us into his home. We stayed there for three months. I went to Temple University. He was like my father figure and mentor for me. And, uh, why Dr. Fryer? Because Dr. Fryer gave a very famous speech called Dr. H. Anonymous, which led to American Psychiatric Association abolishing homosexuality as a diagnosis in D S N. There is a street named after him near University of Pennsylvania. There is a Broadway show. So I feel, in a little way, I was connected with that part of the history. And we are here in this country because of Dr. Fryer. From him, I've learned what inclusivity and how welcoming he was. So I feel very honored to sit here today, and I will be supporting in favor of this. Thank you for letting me share this.
Perfect, thank you so much. Um, Director Keller, do you have any comments? Nope. Okay, thank you. Shaking your hand. No. Uh, Director Blasi?
Yes, thank you, sorry. Uh, I, you know, this, this is an emotional, um, time, I think for all of us, and I so much appreciate being able to, to be in a position to be able to make statements such of the, such as these. And I appreciate the public comment, um, but I think it, it goes far beyond proclamation, and I, I really believe that our school district and our administrators and our staff and our school counselors and our district staff have uh, been and continue to be supportive of the learning of all of our students. And I just ask that if, if our students, um, you know, as was expressed earlier this evening, um, if our LGBTQ students feel as though they're not getting the support they need within their schools, um, that they please, please let us know. But I just, I appreciate a school board and an administration that, um, allows us to publicly proclaim our support. So, thank you.
Uh, Director Bethel?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Uh, Director Goss? Do you have any comments? Director Goss, are you there?
I'm there. I guess you missed my.
Okay, I'm thinking that is a no. Thank you, Director Goss. And Director Hyen, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, I have to use my phone for Zoom. I've never done it before. Uh, yes, you know, I just believe that every student has the right and should be able to go to school without fear of being bullied or being treated badly in any way because of lifestyle or for any reason. We want all of our students to have a quality education and, um, you know, I can't, I can't even think of the right words, but you know, I, I want our kids to enjoy their school experience. I don't want it to be a place where they're bullied or harassed.
Thank you, Director Hyen. Uh, Director Goss, I see you have your, your back on with us. Do you have any comments? Oh, we lost her. Okay, well, we're going to move on. And, uh, uh, for myself, I mean, I just want to say, uh, I mean, I think it's pretty amazing how far we've come. I mean, we've gone from, uh, my grandmother actually lost a House of Representatives race, I believe, here in, uh, here in Oregon, but I believe in Kaiser, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, because my grandfather, uh, came out as gay. And I think it's pretty cool that we come from, well, I mean, sucks that we had to go through that, but you know, it's pretty cool that we come from someone losing an elected official race simply because of that, to, um, now we get to read this, uh, in a public setting, uh, to build up our LGBTQ community. I think it's pretty powerful. Um, so, we have a motion, we have a second, we had our comments, and all of those in favor signify by saying hi.
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 And then.
Hi.
Perfect. And those opposed, same sign. Alright, so we have a unanimous vote to, um, accept and approve the LGBTQ Pride Month Proclamation. Oh, and I also vote for this. Uh, so that is done. And now next, we have the, uh, we're moving on to action item B, which is adopt resolution number two zero one nine two zero dash eight, the adoption and appropriation of the twenty twenty twenty-one budget, including the resolution to close external customers fund resolution to impose and categorize tax taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Uh, but first, I do want to, um, give a moment for Superintendent Perry to make us some comments.
So, um, I want to kind of lay out for you what your options are, um, moving forward, given the amount of testimony. Um, first of all, you can, um, you can delay this vote until the twenty-third. You've got to do it by June thirtieth, but you can delay the vote till the twenty-third. I can't promise you we could get through, um, rigorous community conversations by the twenty-third, but I could promise you that we could get them started and that you could also have another, uh, round of testimony. I was, um, struck a little bit by Levy's, uh, last comments. And so, um, my, uh, recommendation, which, I mean, it's totally up to you, but I'm just gonna tell you what my recommendation is at this point. I think with the amount of testimony that you got, I, I actually believe it would be a powerful move for you to delay this twen- till the twenty-third. Regardless of whether you delay it or not, I will commit that I will have the conversation and that we will, uh, look at the, um, SRO contract, um, in a way, regardless of the outcome of the budget adoption. Because again, we might not have, feel like we've done our due diligence with a community conversation by the twenty-third. But, um, so again, you've got two options. You can move forward. I'll still have the community conversation. I'll move. Um, I will ask you to engage in that with me, um, or you can, um, delay the vote, um, till the twenty-third. The realities of this are that we would need to, um, again, post it as a, as a public hearing in the newspaper. So it does mean, um, posting it all again, uh, we can do that. I asked Sarah on the break to do the research for that. Of course, you know, it's a cost, but, um, you can certainly do that. Um, I think, um, you have to decide as a board what makes the strongest statement to, um, our community who have really showed up tonight in testifying, uh, for something that was really, um, important to our kids of color. So, um, with that, I would, um, turn it back to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, um, Superintendent Perry. So I mean, I guess now, um, we would ha- have either a motion to approve the budget or a motion to, um, to delay the conversation until, uh, next time. Director Blasi, you got a comment?
Yes, I was actually just going to, uh, make a recommendation that we move action item five B to our next, uh, school board meeting that is scheduled, I believe, two weeks from this evening. So I would recommend, my, my recommendation or my proposal is that we, um, we move this action item to the next hearing.
Oh. Oh, instead of us voting on this?
Correct.
Oh, I can't? With the power?
Yeah, so not voting. So the recommendation would be to not vote on the budget this evening, but to move the action item to our next, uh, board meeting.
Oh, that's way easier. Okay, yeah. I move, uh, action item five B to the next board meeting.
Word on this. That, okay, under the rules, that would be a motion to postpone to a certain time.
Oh, so we wouldn't?
It, it is, uh, I, I would characterize Director Blasi's motion as a motion to postpone action on item five B until a certain time, which would require a majority vote.
Okay, so Director Blasi, is that a recommendation or is that a motion?
That is my recommendation. My recommendation is that we postpone action, uh, item five B to a date certain. Trying to find.
Well, well.
Trying to find the calendar.
June twenty-third is our next meeting.
June twenty-third.
Yeah, but I would need a motion in order for us to vote on this.
I move.
That's my motion.
Okay, perfect. So now that it's motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Perfect. So, um, the motion to move our, the action item five B, which is the adopt resolution number two zero one nine two zero dash eight, the adoption and appropriation of the twenty twenty twenty-one budget, including resolution to close external customers fund and resolution to impose and categorize taxes for fiscal year of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to our next scheduled board meeting, which is June twenty-third. Um, motion made by, uh, Director Blasi, seconded by Director Goss. Do we have any board comments?
This is a debatable motion, by the way. This is, this is a debatable motion.
Yeah. Director Chandigiri?
Uh, my, my comment is, this is a very emotional topic. Uh, we heard so many emotional, very painful, uh, experiences shared by a lot of people. And, uh, Levy, uh, rightly summarized it. And I, I'm also feeling very overwhelmed. The question I have is, you know, this is a budget we are approving it. We all know that it is not going to be exactly like what we are approving. The second thing is, Superintendent Perry has said that this is a topic we will continue to engage in very authentic listening. And I don't believe just postponing two weeks of listening is going to really bring down our emotions sufficiently that we will have clarity on this matter. It is a very painful matter. So I really wanted to understand what exactly, are we just going to give our community two weeks more of sharing their emotions? I'm not saying that I, my head will be clear, let alone the children who have been uh, experiencing this day in and day out. This has to be a little bit longer conversation. And we have to give the community a chance to speak. Those who did not speak also are scared. They're going to have all kinds of reaction. There are people who are going to be vocal. There are people who are going to be hiding in their home. The people who are scared to even voice what they are thinking. So my thought is, we need to have very good clarity by waiting two weeks. What is the, is that we are going to accomplish? And on the long-term basis, how are we going to have authentic listening to all the sections who have been frightened, who have been hiding, and who have been silenced? Or who are not able to speak because they're so scared that they did not have a mechanism to speak today? So I just want to be very thoughtful about that. This is like a community PTSD trauma. It's not going to settle down in two weeks, in my opinion.
I suggest.
I just want to hear from the superintendent what exactly you're going to accomplish in two weeks. How is it going to bring down the emotions of the community? And how are you going to listen to them who are silent today? Silent doesn't mean they don't have an opinion. Silent also, in my opinion, doesn't mean they have not been traumatized by this.
Yeah, okay. No, thank you so much for your comments, uh, Director Chandigiri. Uh, Director Kylo, do you have any comments? No? Okay, uh, Director Blasi?
Uh, I, well, I think Satya wanted to hear from the superintendent, but I, um, but my response to his question is, I, I don't know that we have to make a decision about, uh, the contracts, the SRO contracts within two weeks. But we will need to make a decision about the budget. But even if we, in two weeks from now, voted, uh, to approve the budget as it's written, um, can still have an ongoing conversation about the next contract, the upcoming contract or ending contract. We can have that conversation, but I think, um, out of respect for the community and for everything that is happening right now and for the concerns, I think that this is a respectful response to very significant concerns that have been, been raised. But, uh, Satya, I don't, I don't know that we're going to have a resolution. about the actual contracts, but I don't think that we need to. But we do have to pass a budget in two weeks. But I think this will just give us more opportunity and it keeps it in the forefront of our decision-making right now. So I, again, I think this is a very respectful choice by us. So thank you.
No, thank you, Director Blassi. Oh, and sorry, Director Chandigarhiri, I did not mean to skip over your question, Kristy. So Superintendent Perry, could you please answer, respond to Director Chandigarhiri?
Yeah, I would just echo Director Blassi's response. I, I think it creates some urgency. I also think it's important that you pause for just a little, a little bit of time. It's a respectful way to address concerns and, and create some urgency around getting some of the work done. We will not, I will not, I will not promise you that I'm going to be able to get to every person, including the people who have been silenced in two weeks. I can promise you that we will get some work done. We will get some input and we'll bring back what we have. And if you approve, if we're not finished with our work and you approve the budget or adopt the budget on the 23rd as is, it doesn't mean anything about the contracts. We can still change SRO contracts.
So I have an additional comment if I could. Are you there?
Jesse, you're on mute.
Oh, go ahead, Director Goss. Sorry about that.
Thank you. So I think what we need is some time. Tonight is emotional. It stirred lots of emotions. And I think we all need to put our thoughts together. I very much support going to the 23rd. And particularly, we can adopt the budget, which we need to do. And then we are free to change the budget. It doesn't, it doesn't mean that we must, must live with the contracts we have in the budget or not. So we do need the time, though, to put our thoughts together, all of us. And so I will definitely support the motion to wait until the 23rd.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Director Goss. Chairwoman Hyun, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, I do. I mean, I, I will vote to postpone. However, you know, I've, I've heard, seen so much misinformation out there. One, one group was promoting that SROs had to do with deportation, things like that, which is totally untrue. And I, I hope the, the, in this two weeks, people will be able to get to the truth of really what the role of the SRO does. I have received so many emails in favor of SROs, how these, these individuals have saved the lives of students that were having troubles. The, they are not like the officer that pulls you over for speeding. These officers have relationships with the students. So I do agree that we need to get our officers and the communities together for conversation to, to be able to understand each other. But I also believe that the SROs provide a very necessary resource and I do support them. However, I still will vote to postpone, even though it's really not going to affect the budget. Because we're not going to just pull a line item out of the budget when you're not going to be changing contracts or anything else. So that's my comment.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Hyun. Director Bethel, do you have any comments?
I do. I think that what Levy said earlier about the emotion is pretty real for, for everybody that's existing in today's lifetime. And I think that, while earlier, when we were listening to that public testimony, I pulled down three pages of email notes, names of people who have submitted emails to either myself directly or to all of us as a board, asking not to pull SROs out of our schools. Director Hyun spoke about the stories of how SROs build relationships and save lives. People aren't perfect. We do have people who make mistakes and we need to be having those community conversations and building relationships. And we need to have act proactive leadership in our district and in our law enforcement to make sure that we're bridging those gaps. There has to be an understanding on both sides. I will support the vote to postpone to the 23rd. But I expect in the next two weeks to be involved in every aspect of the conversations to understand what, what our community is asking for and it not just be laid on me in one night. A million dollars isn't that much money when we talk about trying to make an impact in the number of schools that we have. SROs are barely getting enough across the board as it is to try to build those relationships to prevent students from getting into trouble. So this is a very, very big emotional conversation for every parent. And I am a parent in this district of kids today that interact with SROs regularly. So, you know, I, this is a big task for Superintendent Perry and her staff to take in two weeks. So please lean out on us as board members and ask us to, put us to work. We need to be bringing people together.
Thank you so much for your, for your comments, Director Bethel. And I mean, as far as myself, I mean, I would just say that, I mean, a lot of guests bring up great, great points. I mean, there's, you know, there, the SROs are clearly there for a reason, you know, to keep kids safe. And so seems like we're pretty open, having the communication with the public, you know, understanding, hey, where, why are you feeling what you're feeling? And is there a way for us to do it without their SROs? Well, how, how, how would we be able to do that and still keep kids safe? You know, and that's, that would be my big concern, you know, how, how do we make sure kids are still taken care of? So we have a motion. Oh, go.
I make one more comment too. There were, the petition also actually was asking for even some bigger action than just SROs. So there were a number of other comments and things in there that are, the SROs was one little bit. And so I think that's also going to be important for us to always, also all read carefully through the petition we got, the testimony that you heard. Just as I'm processing it through, I think, support. Told some of the things about the demands in that petition. So I've got to go back and listen and read at the same time. And I think that's really an important first step, is to read over the petition carefully and look at the broth, because it's, it was SROs is one piece, school-to-prison pipeline and some really serious issues around safety and well-being of our black and brown kids in our schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Perry. I mean, I think you're right. I think it's our time to listen. But yeah, so we have a motion by Director Blassi, a second by Director Goss. Board member comments we did. And so all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And, aye. And then those opposed, same sign. Perfect. So the motion to move the budget vote action item to June 23rd is passing. So now we move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to push, pull anything from the consent calendar?
I wish to move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Kylo. Do we have a second?
I second.
Giri, thank you so much for the second. Do we have any board member comment or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. We have a motion by Director Kylo, a second by Director Chandigarhiri to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And aye. And those opposed, same sign. So we have unanimous vote on that to approve the consent calendar. Now we move to readings where we have none. Now to reports. We moved items B and C to our June 23rd meeting. So now we just have item A on our reports. And I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Perry.
Actually, I think we're moving A and B to the 23rd and C legally required policies is what I'm going to do now. So I'm on executive limitations 12. It's okay. It was a little confusing. So, and the reason to move the other, the KPIs and the academic EL, we're also going to bring forward on the 23rd, some of the feedback we've gained from the surveying of parents and some focus group with parents and families related to distance learning and our panorama data that we collected as well into the 23rd. So it all fits well together. But now we've added the budgets, so it'll make for a good amount of meeting on that night as well. So this is executive limitation number 12, which is the 12th of the 12 monitoring reports. And this particular executive limitation shows for you all the board legally required policies and if we've made any changes to them over the years or over the year. So the legally required policies are listed there and then in the evidence of compliance, I've listed the policies that we have made changes to. And then we need to get this policy updated because it doesn't give you, I don't think, some of the relevant information along the way that you, as board members. So I'm going to recommend that we push, this is one of the first things that we do in our summer planning to figure out how do you really want to get information and notice around some of the more major policies that we implement, because we do so much of that internally. And just the legally required policies aren't, don't give you the best view of all the other policies that are meaningful. So you definitely don't want to take on every policy. That would take you hours and hours and you want us to do a lot of that administrative work. But there's some key ones that I think would be better to update you with along the way. Even though I think that we want to, we'd like to keep them within administrative approval process. So we, just as a couple other little bits, the entrance age policy, we've changed based on a legal update. There were a number of legal updates to child abuse and sexual conduct that we need to make based on legislative changes. There was also attendance requirement changes, because there were two new categories of attendance for how you track kids when they don't attend. One is mental health. And then seven days of travel for students of military officials. And then we also implemented and updated our restraint and seclusion policy based on the new legislative changes around restraint and seclusion. And then you've been updated on that we've adopted our suicide prevention policy. So with that, we're still in the process of updating our communicable disease, emergency operation plans and discipline procedures. And again, I'm recommending that we take this particular policy into the July board planning to, to really have a conversation around what's the most important policy work. And I'll do, if it's acceptable to you, a little bit of here's what boards in other districts approve and why some things are legally required and what I would recommend as a forward for you. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
All right. Now with questions, we're going to do the same process. So I'm just going to call, call you guys. So Director Chandigarhiri, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Superintendent Perry, thank you. So I want to ask a question to clarify. So these are the policies which will tie in with our monitoring data that you'll be presenting periodically during the board meetings. Is that what you mean by legally required policies that?
No, but I mean, there are certain legislative laws that are passed that specifically say the board, the school board will adopt these policies. And there are a range of policies. So, and I, and you don't, they're not part of our monitoring report. Like, for example, entrance age and that, I don't know if that's a good one. Let me go to the top. The equal opportunity policy, for example, is one that's legally required. That means the law says the school board will adopt a policy. In policy governance, you've given all of that over, authority over to me and then I report to you about the legally required policies.
I, I just, I'm not clear. So it just, does it just mean that we should have a policy? Or how do we know that that is being implemented? And what mechanism we have that the community knows? For example, discipline. Does that mean periodically, community will know how are we tracking, whether that is being done? Or, so once it is delegated, how does the board know or the community know that that is indeed being tracked? And?
For, all, all this executive limitation is telling you, is making sure that we keep the policies updated according to the law. That's all this policy does. This executive limitation, it says, you as a superintendent will put the, the policies that are needed into place based on the law. What, how we tell you if a policy is not being followed is we report that to you in the executive limitation. If it rises to a, I mean, there's mistakes all the time. But if there's a significant policy breach of any sort, then we report that to you in my monthly executive limitation reports.
May I provide a brief clarification?
Oh, go ahead.
When, when the school board converted to policy governance, I and a number of other district administrators went through every single policy. And we had a policy book that was probably four inch, five inches thick. We went through every single policy to determine who needed to adopt the policy. And what you have here is the policies that school boards must adopt. And so we call these the, the legally required policies, because you must have these policies. And this is the superintendent's report to show you, yes, you, we do have these policies. And she updates them with, with me and, and staff people when, when legislation occurs. So it's my legal obligation to make sure you have these as well. And this is the executive limitation that explains that just this handful of policies the board has to have and that book of five inches thick policies, those are now administrative policies that, that the district keeps current.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that. Does that answer your question, Director Chandigarhiri?
No, it didn't. So, so these policies, the owner of, in the sense, it, these are the board's policies. We have delegated it to superintendent. If, for example, there is an exclusionary discipline, like expulsion is higher in, say, the children of color, then ultimately the board is responsible.
These are legally required.
Yeah, so I'm really wondering if the board is responsible to directly be responsible, how the, this is being monitored and how it is being reported and what changes. Is that what I mean?
Okay, yes, I see what you mean, Director Chandigarhiri. So yeah, basically what they're saying is, it's kind of like we are, it's like a, with a company. Kristy's the CEO. And so we hold her responsible, but then the public holds us responsible. So technically, yes, the public could hold us responsible. But it would be the district as a whole, if that makes sense. As far as like a lawsuit would be concerned, I believe it would be the district.
These are legally required.
But yeah, and as Director Blassi said, it's legally required for us to, for us to, so. All right. So Director Bethel, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. So this is, I'm actually really glad we're talking about this because it was one of the executive limitations that I brought up last year when I first became a school board member. And as a parent, I fail to see how I can gain access to these policies at a ready, readily available, easy access point to understand them. at a ready, readily available, easy access point to understand them. And as a board member, um, they haven't, they're not provided to me. So I haven't been able to read through all of these. I was given a link and as it's been stated now by Paul DiCapolis, there's a four inch binders worth of policies on that website. Um, I just wonder, something similar supposed to Satya is, yes, these are legally required. I understand that, but I don't feel that we're looped in as a board or a community on these policies on a regular basis, except for when it comes to that time of year that this EL pops onto an agenda and it's kind of the status quo. Um, that makes me uncomfortable. It makes me feel like I'm out of the loop. Um, it, not because I don't trust the superintendent or administration, but because I think communication and transparency is key to good, healthy relationships. Um, so when it says down there, I think it's in number two, that the super, the superintendent shall not fail to provide the school board with information regarding any substance substantive changes. What, what's the definition of that substantive subs? I can't even say the word. Um, and, and who's interpreting it? Is it us as a board? We have a conversation and decide, um, what that definition is? Or is it up to the administration to communicate that to us?
Um, I would say it's up to us to communicate that to you. And we, hmm, I think this is a bigger conversation that you just need to tell me what you want. I'm like, I don't, just honestly, I don't have it in me for this. Like this level right now. So, um, I would, my recommendation is that we, uh, talk about it in our July, uh, meeting. Cause I actually serve at your pleasure and will do what you, um, want me to do. So, um, you just decide and I'll do it. Um, but, um, so I think it's on us to give you, um, policy updates. Um, we try to do that in a variety of ways. Um, I don't know if it totally meets the, um, your expectation or not. But, and if it doesn't, we'll do it differently. We've, um, sometimes in the past also given, um, hard copies of the, um, all the policy work. Um, when somebody asks, hey, could we just get a, a snapshot of all the policy changes? Um, and we could do that. I think, uh, we have a four inch binder and it would be best if you think through as far as policies, what are the ones that you, um, are most important to you, um, to know about? Many of them, like the, uh, child abuse, um, policy work, you is wholly mandated by law. So the bulk of them have some sort of a legal tie. Um, the school age policy is another one. Um, when we had, um, hazing, uh, the sexual harassment is another one. You can see when there's legislative changes, they tie right to, um, the policy changes. So other than, um, so the bulk of them come about that way. And again, um, you just have to tell me, uh, what format. I don't, I'm not really trying to sound dismissive. I'm just trying to like, just tell me what you want on it.
No, I don't think you're sounding dismissive at all. I think, I think you're answering my question. You're basically saying that a bulk of the changes that come are legislative and it's tied to that and you're giving that in a report. Um, I guess for me, and I think Satya's feeling this way, I, I mean, maybe not, but, um, these particular policies are important because they're the ones that are brought to our attention. And so, um, I, I'd like to see them based on the Salem Kaiser School District's, um, verbiage versus going to a federal law because there may be differences in the language or the application. Uh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to impose, uh, any thought that you're not doing it.
No.
Uh, at all. And I don't want you to think that. I think you do a great job and it's a process of learning and evolving. But if I don't get it, then I think a bulk of the population of parents that I'm trying to represent may not get it either.
And I think we, the, um, bigger question though is, um, what are the most important? Because in the, when you add, um, the bulk of the policies, you then have to decide, um, is that too much, you know, information? So is, are there fifty that are most, um, the fifty most important? If you, if we take some time to really look through those and what are legally required? Um, because otherwise you're inundating, um, uh, publicly. Um, the policies that some of them apply to public parents, some of them apply to employees. We, um, used to have all of them on our public website and then became the problem. There's so many that we cluttered things so much that then people couldn't find anything either. So, and we might just need to, um, look at it both from a, what are the key policies? And then what are the key policies? We need to be sure that we have on our external website as well. Um, and I think that's really, um, important work, um, for you to do, um, as a board to just say, here are the important things to us, especially as you've, as a board, you've had a full year cycle in the seat now. This is a summer to tackle that.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, no, I would like to say, just because I was calling back to last year and the year before that, uh, Superintendent Perry has asked us, she's like, hey, uh, we're going to be doing the one executive limitation bump. Uh, would you like us to keep doing it this way? Is this helpful? And typically from what I've heard from board members, yes. But yeah, if we're, if we're going to change things, which it seems like, um, might be helpful, um, that would be something one, in our July meetings, like work sessions, that's definitely something that I think we can discuss just because, uh, if it's more helpful for us to receive it in another way, then we, it's for us. That's, she wouldn't do it for herself, you know? And so, um, if we want it in another way, I think that'd be a good time for us to do that. Um, and Director Blossom, you had your hand up?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Director Tyler, do you have any questions? Um, Chairwoman Hyen?
Uh, no, no questions.
All right, and Director Goss?
So just a reminder that these, what we're looking at is the executive limitations. And these are written to, for us to evaluate Christie with. And if you read the comp, her job is to make sure we're aware of new legal ones that are right. So the question with executive limitations is, has she made us aware of the new ones that we might not have? The new legal ones that have come from the state? Is it the state Christie or federal?
All of the above.
Okay, they are ones that we have determined to have. So maybe that helps you understand a little bit.
Yeah, no, I do think, uh, at least my understanding of, uh, Director Bethel, Director Chan Gary's comments, which I don't want to speak on behalf of them, was just that, um, while those are there, they, we don't, I mean, I could say just for myself, I don't know if it was lost or like what exactly it entailed and how we, how we word it. And so I think that would be, I think that's more of what they were saying. Uh, but yeah, no, there's definitely a July meeting. That's something that we should take care of, sure. So that is, do you have anything else you want to say? Uh, Superintendent Perry in regards to executive limitation twelve?
No.
Okay, perfect. Do we just move on or do we do consensus on that?
I think you just move on.
Okay, so next is going to be, uh, oh, Director Chan Gary, you had your hand raised.
You know, I, it's with a, a lot of respect for our community. Today we heard from the community, one important policy that is listed called discipline. Because the discipline is the first way in which folks end up in the criminal justice system. So it is, it's not for me or any one of us. The community should know how are we tracking? How are we getting better at it? Because you know, the pipeline for prison starts very early. And what are some of the things we can do to intervene? So this is not just to follow a law. I don't like just to do some work just because there is a legal obligation. To me, as a parent or as a community member, I would like to know if my child is having early signs, which will eventually lead to difficult behavior later or law enforcement. So these are very important policies in the spirit of it. And as a community, if my, as a parent, if you hear how it is being tracked, what are the pipelines? So that as a parent, I can intervene and prevent that pipeline and get the child back on a healthy trajectory. So not just listing the policies, but how it is being monitored, how are we using that information to inform the parents of, that makes, I feel would be more meaningful. I don't want to increase the work for anybody unless it's useful.
Sure, yeah, no, in the LA, let's talk about that in July during a work session, how we want to receive information, what we want it to look like. Uh, thank you, Director Chan Gary. Um, so now on to information. So it looks like we're going to have a special board meeting on Wednesday, July the first at noon for the purpose of selecting the chair and the vice chair for the upcoming year. And then, um, so that's all we have for information. Now moving on to public comment. We will now hear public comment on items not necessarily related to the agenda. Again, we will allow for three minutes, uh, for each person to comment. Uh, Director Blossom?
Thank you. Sorry, trying to unmute. Um, so I, I did want to make a comment about the, um, upcoming meetings.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So the July one, uh, the special board meeting for the election of the chair and the vice chair. Um, I've reached out to a couple folks, um, but I want to propose something and it doesn't, it doesn't require a vote, but I want to put it out there to the board for consideration. Uh, because we are going to be electing, uh, board leadership, which as we know is incredibly important. I would like to ask that we, we do something that we haven't, I don't know that we've technically done before, but it's kind of similar to what we do, uh, when budget committee members, uh, request to join the budget committee. Um, we pose a couple of questions that they can choose to answer, they can choose not to. Uh, but I think if we are, um, electing school board leadership, which is incredibly important, I think both, uh, other school board members should have an opportunity to hear, say for example, why someone wants to be the chair of the school board or the vice chair of the school board. Um, and, and I'm not talking about, you know, um, something overly complicated or, but I, I just think people need to have an opportunity to hear both other board members and the public. Um, you know, right now, not everyone is completely thrilled with the Salem Kaiser School Board, um, publicly. And it would be a great opportunity for people to hear from those, um, who want to represent us in a leadership role. And, and I want to hear why people want to be in a leadership role instead of walking into a board meeting and decisions have already been made. I'd like for us to have the opportunity to hear, um, and make an informed decision. So, um, I don't know that I'm necessarily proposing that we decide on that, but I, I, I would like us to give, give that serious consideration.
Thank you, Director Blossom. Um, do, do we, uh, is it possible for us to make a decision like that? Or is it something that we would need to, uh, talk about at a later time? How, how could that work? I guess this would be a question for Superintendent Perry or Paul DiCapolis.
Well, the, um, the board would need to consider the, the procedures that you use for, for elections. So, uh, maybe at your twenty-third, at your, at your twenties, at June twenty-third meeting, um, you have a discussion about that. We're gonna have a discussion about it right now, for that matter. Your, your, your board policies on board elections is silent on, on this level of detail. Uh, there's no reason you, you couldn't decide to do this, but I think he was a board would need to weigh in with each other on whether, whether you'd like to do that or not.
So just to confirm, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to vote yes or no, but we could just get consensus, yeah, like thumbs up, thumbs down.
Well, I mean, you could, you could write it in a policy for that matter. But if we're just looking at this next election, you only have one more board meeting before July one. So you either decide it, uh, at your June twenty-third meeting or at your July one meeting. Uh, but I think that it, it would be a, a board decision. The board chair also has the ability. I'd have to look at the policy again and I'd like some time to do that before I answer this. But, uh, the order of the meeting is largely a board chair decision, but it doesn't really speak to how do elections, board elections happen.
Gotcha. Okay, and I do have two raised, so I'm going to go through Director Blossom first.
Sorry, what did you say?
Oh, your, your hand is raised.
Oh, I'm, no, sorry, I didn't put it down at, I raised it so I could make that suggestion. I'll lower it. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
And Director Chan Gary, you had your hand up for a while?
Yes. You know, I thank you, uh, Director Blossom for bringing that up. At least the least I would like to know is whoever is running for chair or vice chair, please tell us what are one or two things that you would like to, how you would like to function? What are one or two things you would like to see our board work together and achieve those either clear goals or the process or whatever it is? But it would be nice if you can write at least a paragraph and share among seven of us. So we are aware, okay, what is it that you're going to do in the next twelve months? How are you going to do it? And how, and what can we do? So at least I have some idea before I make informed decision. I don't know about the general public and thing, but at least the seven of us should have clarity. Thank you.
No, thank you, uh, Director Chan Gary. Um, and Chairwoman Hyen?
Yes, um, I am hesitant to jump into a change this late in the process. Uh, we have applications from budget committee members because we don't know who they are. We have worked together and we know who each other are. I've worked with Paul for five years. I've worked with you, Jesse, for three and Satya for one year. I think we all have a good understanding of who we are based on our, our conversations with each other and everything. I think that if the board really wants to take this step, that we add it as a policy in July and we have a discussion about, uh, what is the best question to ask? And will it, you know, what purpose will it really serve? And will, will it help us understand who we want leadership to be over the next year? But to do it again at this last minute like this, um, I, I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your concern, uh, Chairwoman Hyen. Uh, Director Goss, do you have anything to say?
I do. Um, so I don't think that's particularly harmful. So I think we all have our own reasons for being there, though our own ideas of which direction we should go or what we should go. And I think that makes sense a little bit to have a very short statement about how you intend to lead or what you intend to do. And I don't think it's too big a deal. I would like to hear that and it gives us a, a way, if we're going sideways, for somebody to pull the string and say, hey, you are going to look at things in this direction or talk that way throughout the board meet, board year. And I think that's a good thing. So I would be in favor of coming up with just a couple of questions. I don't think it needs to be a terribly big thing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, Director Tyler, anything?
I, yes, I've been through more of these board elections than anybody except Paul, I think. And, um, in, in each one of them, at least in the past, the, uh, the candidates were given an opportunity after they'd been nominated to speak if they wished. Oftentimes they didn't, we didn't, I didn't. But most, but it was always offered. I don't know why that, that would not be a change and it would be a compromise. And if the candidates understand that they're, they will be expected to say something for a few minutes, then that seems to me to take care of the problem because my concern is that who would write the questions? Since it's possible that the board leadership may be running themselves. And so I don't know how the questions that would be fair would be determined. I would rather let the candidates make a statement at the time they're nominated.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. Um, and Director Hyun, uh, sorry, Chairwoman Hyun, do you have something else or is your hand still just raised?
Uh, sorry, I'm working on a phone and I don't see my hand raised. If you could unraise it for me, I would appreciate it.
I got your back. All right, perfect. I just want to make sure I didn't miss you. Uh, and then just me, myself personally, I mean, I, um, I could see definitely both sides. I mean, one, one part of it would be right. We want to make sure that we're unknowing and understand where people come, are coming from. Second part, which Paul brought up, uh, what if it comes to a point where, uh, you know, someone doesn't want to run themselves, but they get nominated and they're willing to do it. Um, you know, I think that we've seen, I've seen that happen uh before and I think that, um, that brings its own interesting dynamic into play. So um, because not everyone's going to be gunning for the position. So anyways, uh, so thank you so much for you guys' comments. I guess that's something we'll be able to talk about. Oh, yeah, Director Bethel.
Thank you. Uh, so I actually agree with Paul. Somebody marked that down that it happened. I know, my gosh, putting down. So I, I mean, I agree because I think that anytime somebody wants to be a true leader, they, they're any, and a question is potentially asked, it's subjective to uh leading a response. And I'd much rather have the people who are stepping up to lead me in something as important as this, have a platform that they fully own and can present that on their own without leading um questions and narratives being put on paper. Not to mention the fact that we're all super busy and there's a lot going on and in the next two weeks, getting questions together that we can all agree on could probably pretty much impossible, considering we have a bigger um agenda to really look at when it comes to the more emotional conversation of SRO.
Sure. Um, and Director Blassi, you have the address?
Yeah, I, I had to unmute. Sorry. No, I would, I would agree with that. I just haven't felt the last couple of years that we've really had that opportunity. So I appreciate the reminder that, that we can do that. And I would like the space to be provided to do that and for it to be meaningful. Um, again, I think uh some of it goes to the issue of transparency around how um board leadership is elected versus walking into a room with predetermined decisions being made. And, and I would just like to hear from people uh versus being, have it, again, have it being predetermined. So I think that that would, that would work if we, we agree that we have the space for those who, um, you know, want to, um, want to run for those leadership positions. We just allow that space in that meeting and that, that would be agreed upon. Instead of, yeah, in, instead of doing um questions.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point. Um, and I agree with that as well. Uh, Director, um, Chairwoman Hyun, you have the address?
Yes, uh, so you know, I agree with Paul too. So, you know, if multiple people are nominated, then certainly every person should have an opportunity to say what they want, if they want. Uh, my concern was questions and the amount of time and who would even decide what those questions were and that they could be stacked in, in a particular way. And that was my concern. Now, making a statement about, you know, maybe what you've done and what you want to do if, if the nominee wants to do that is absolutely great.
No, thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Hyun. Uh, and Director Chan Gary, you have the address?
You know, uh, you know, I hear both sides. But I'm new to this process. I'm just one year. You're all wonderful people. Just one page or half a page or one paragraph in bullet point if you want. Tell me what you want to do, how you want to do it, what way you want me to or all of us to support you so that our childrens are the one in focus. And I mean, both, all of you have unique things to bring to this. There's so much unique experience, life experience, etc. Please tell us about that so that we can make among ourselves. And to me, that is a very nice way of democratizing our process so that that gets translated into our community. Ultimately, we have to be the role model for our community. How we do it? Uh, I enjoyed working with all of us and it is an amazing group. We held it together. We ran the ship as best as we can. So please tell us something more. Tell us, pray, you know, this is the place to shine. Tell us how you're going to do it.
Thank you so much, Director Chan Gary. All right, so it looks like we've answered everybody. The only person I'm wondering, Director Goss, anything else?
Asking me? What are you asking me?
Oh, if you had anything else to say.
No, no, I, I agree. I think that, that I agree that it's hard to have things pre-done, walk in, all the walk out. And that's the way it's been in the past. I resigned over that or I didn't run over that same thing. And I'm definitely with, with um Sharon and that we should know a little bit more about what's going on and what people are doing and why they want to do what they're asking to do. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Perfect. All right, well, it looks like we're in agreement then on that. Uh, so now we are going to move on to a public comment on non-agenda items. So I'm gonna, uh, we will now hear public comment on items not necessarily related to the agenda. Again, we will allow for three minutes for each person to comment. Those needing translations of their public comments will be provided. Six minutes total. Our communications team will facilitate pu- public comment. So I'll turn this over to them. And then Lillian, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
We have two um items of public comment on non-agenda items.
Perfect. Those please.
Great. The first is from Philip Dawson of Salem. He is a student. He says, when is the school district letting the students like me get our stuff for our lockers and classrooms? The, we have left inside schools because we thought we will be going back to school on April 29th, 2020. The next public comment is highlighted. Hold on. Uh, the next public comment is um Cecilia Orta of Salem. And she says, what are we expecting for the 2021 school year? Are you guys looking into possibly having some schools who have full days without face masks required or making the kids feel they are in boot camp? Considering they are in, they are kids. A lot of parents are leaning toward, more towards having their kids back at school without restrictions. Is there going to be options for us for those parents that work full-time and cannot homeschool? And there are two items uh for public comment not related to the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you. And I would assume that um the district is going to respond in some way to those at some point somehow. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right. So now we're going to move on to the board activity report. Um, and so we'll start with you, Director Bethel.
COVID-19, that's what I've been doing. So I feel like that's all I've been doing for the last three months. Um, in Kaiser, the community, we have a lot of need for food. Um, so been out participating with getting families food, responding to lots of um instant message requests that are coming to my um, my school board page and then my personal page. Uh, really trying to connect the dots uh between communication and it's coming out that I'm seeing from the district with the community. Uh, I think Lillian's team's doing a really great job of trying to get ahead of notices. Uh, I noticed late last week, whatever week we're in, the communications team sent out saying that Kaiser Elementary, um, the food chair site was going to be removed and re- relocated to the church. I saw crickets in the community. And so I'm working, trying to figure out how to really get that message a little further so those families aren't showing up and they're just buzzing around perplexed, trying to figure out how to get that food because it's a big need. Um, and then, oh my gosh, the number of, of, of questions I'm getting about when kids can get their stuff out of their locker. I said earlier, I'm a mom of two, so of course a lot of that's internal stuff. Um, whatever those papers are, super important. And I know there's a plan and I know that it's going to be coming. I, uh, I can't say enough thanks to our, our staff and our educators. Um, in the last week, just about every one of my daughter's teachers has touched base with me as a parent and with my, my girls to check on them and their transition to, into the summer. Um, and as a mom of a senior, I have seen the way our, our high school teams are really putting themselves out there in unique ways to try to honor our kids and in, in really unfortunate times. And although there's some small things getting missed, I see them trying to pick that up and fill it very quickly. Um, I just, I'm so, I'm so impressed and I'm so grateful for the love that this community gives to our kids and to just get to see it from this side, knowing the effort that's being put out is remarkable. Um, so thank you again. That's what I've been doing.
Thank you, Director Bethel. Sounds like you've been busy. All right, uh, Director Kyla.
Oops, am I muted? Yep. Um, I have been working with nurses on, surprise, surprise, um, Black Like Me and Equity Work. So that's been interesting. I've been trying to share what I've, what's been of interest with Craig and Christie. Um, because I know that the nurses are trying to come together to make, to increase the awareness of um minority issues within the medical care system and how there is a disparity in the treatment between the races in hospitals. And so I've been doing some work with that and um, just making myself more sensitive to the needs. Uh, and um, feeling my own white superiority and looking for it in places I didn't expect to find it. So that's what I've been dealing with.
Sounds like a lot. I'd be really interested to hear more about that, Paul.
Yeah.
All right, um, now Director, uh, Blassi.
Thank you. Um, obviously for a lot of us, uh, you know, the last, since the last time we met, um, just a lot of emotions, um, a lot of things happening. You know, in addition to everything that everyone is dealing with COVID, um, just being reminded again um, around the very senseless killing of George Floyd. Um, where we still are as a society and, um, but I will tell you, this evening was, um, I think was, was good in the sense that we got to hear from our community. I don't think I was quite expecting it to be in that manner, but um, it was really good. And this is, you know, it's just, it's just been a hard time. Um, I appreciate that, uh, you know, that the board um is willing to make statements about, you know, LGBTQ and, and, and that. But the one thing, sorry, I, I realize my laptop is about to die, so I'm moving as I'm talking to grab the plug. Um, one thing, sorry, one thing that I uh wanted to share though was, um, you may or may not have had a chance to see the correspondence today uh, from SCAF. So Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, um, did vote today to dissolve uh the foundation and Christie might have some comments to make, but um, a couple of things I wanted to mention, uh, the SCAF board itself over the last, goodness, I don't even know how long, probably two years has really, um, just come together, stepped up, the staff that were at SCAF, um, the staff that have had to be let go over the last several months. Um, you know, and unfortunately, when you're operating a nonprofit that relies on revenues that are based on when kids are in school, um, you know, that's, that's where, um, you know, just the significant revenue shortfalls. But I do want to say that I think the SCAF board and Kelly Carlisle, um, who's the executive director, who we all know and love, um, really has stepped up and helped SCAF dissolve gracefully and, um, you know, uh, in place. So, you know, the programs are going to be transferred to uh Marion Pope County YMCA. Um, you know, there's still work being done on needing to sell the building. So there's still work to do, but uh SCAF will officially be dissolved um June 30. And, and that's heartbreaking. Um, but I, I believe, I truly believe that there's a plan in place to provide uh those um athletic activities and the after-school programs. Um, so there will be more information coming out, but I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of the SCAF board and uh, the staff that are still there and the staff that dedicated years and years and years. Um, but uh, you know, the organization just um wasn't able to survive this current time. So I just want to acknowledge their hard work. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Director Blassi. Uh, Director Chan Gary.
Uh, thank you very much, Vice Chair Leopold. Uh, this has been a difficult time for me since the death of George Floyd. And, you know, it has kind of, personally, I, it's caused a lot of trauma for me, both vicariously. I serve many who have had trauma, been in violence and racism and COVID-19, and some of them have been placed in restraints and police uh interactions. I also think of our students, like 52 persons, 90 different languages. They have all escaped community violence in their own countries or different places, since some of them are generationally. So it has been really overwhelming. And one of the things I really tried hard is not to say something, not to post something which will further cause harm to the community. So I had to find a way to kind of ground myself, calm my own emotions, so I can have a little bit more clarity. So when there is silence on my part, that does not mean I condone anything. Then I started writing a reflective uh reflection in an article which I shared with Superintendent Perry and so many other leaders, our elected officials. I had participated in a meeting with our mayor and police chief and representative. And uh, I've been working with other leaders behind the scene so that we can start making sense of how to move forward. I submitted an article in the Statesman Journal just out of that, saying our community needs to fa- start healing this. There's no plan B. This cannot go on. This is damaging for our nation, health, education, anything you say. It is not the way and we cannot allow our generational harm to damage the next generation. We all have the capacity to interrupt this. For too long, this has gone on. Racism is like a pervasive fog that is spread everywhere. And you know, for me, as an immigrant, I walked into this country and I have to honor all the ancestors who lived behind this place. I'm walking on their soil. So for me to acknowledge that they all carried their own boots, their own good, bad, ugly inside them. And how I can take steps so that we can start healing this story and not hurt the next generation. So I really want to use this opportunity, this blessing as a school board director to start framing that question. I don't have answers. With all humility, I must say, I don't completely understand the horrors that people before me have gone through. Yet I should have a non-judgmental stance of listening. And today was a beautiful opportunity for me to listen. And I'm sure there's some more we have to listen. My only hope is I don't react one way or other without completely understanding. So thank you for allowing me to share this. I will continue doing this and I'll be happy to share what I have written. Some of you, I shared, I'll be happy to share. Thank you. Thank you. It was difficult for me.
Thank you so much, Director Chan Gary. I really appreciate the work you're putting in. Um, Director Goss.
So I talked to parents more in the last month than I did in actually doing things with kids. Parents are really concerned for what next year will bring. And I found myself consistently saying, gosh, we take a lot of directions from Oregon Department of Education and they haven't sent the directions yet. And as a result, the district hasn't made all those decisions yet and trying to calm them down. And the kids will still have a safe place to be. They will still have school and they will still have learning. And that was pretty much what I did this last month.
Thank you, Director Goss, appreciate that. And there was.
I love Zoom, I tell you. Where else can you attend a meeting from another state? Sorry, I was on late and we lost Wi-Fi this afternoon, and so I'm missing my data. I promise to listen to the testimony on YouTube when I return to town. I also, because thanks to Zoom, was able to attend a McKay Booster Club meeting and hear what's going on with them. Certainly, it's a little hard for them to plan when we don't know the future of sports or what's going to be open when. And of course, in addition to my honorary chair duties, I attended a few meetings over at Grant Elementary, where there are some concerns by the neighborhood on some of the construction. And the district and I and Director Kylo, we met with some representatives from the Neighborhood Association and listened to their concerns and brainstormed some ideas. And a week later, I attended another meeting with some different people at the district to discuss some of the ideas that the neighborhood had and to brainstorm some others. And so the, you know, the district is taking a serious look at what could change, you know? Is it feasible, possible? And trying to find the best solution for both the the students who are medically fragile and our community. Other than that, you know, what's going on has really affected our family. I am a mother of a minority person. My son has brain scan. I understand more than people think. A lot of people make decisions about me when they don't really know me or my family. We want to remind everybody that we're all human beings. We're all, we all have feelings. We all have different life experiences. But it's important that we remember to treat each other with kindness and to listen. And even though you may not understand the other person's perspective, listen to them and and try to understand and just know that, you know, that's their reality and how they're feeling. And, you know, you just need to respect that.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hyun, appreciate that. As far as myself goes, I mean, of course, I've been meeting with kids from McKay through, because of my, in life, I read Young Life out of McKay. And so we were just hanging out with a bunch of students. Some of them are graduating, you know? And so we were just talking about a lot of that, like that depression kind of comes with, that kind of comes with not being around other people and how do we, how do we deal with that? You know, and listening to students as they can force their concerns over how they're getting back to school, what graduation looks like, the lack of graduation at all, if for some reason doesn't happen in August. And so just, it's been really been a lot of listening, kind of like Director Bethel was saying. You know, a lot of it's been COVID, COVID. And then, you know, with the death of George Floyd and the surge of the Black Lives Matter movement, you know, I've really spent a lot of my time listening. Because when it when it first became huge, right? It was, I myself had some defensiveness right off the bat, just because it was like, there was a false narrative painted, right? Where it's either you care about Black Lives Not a Movement or you care about your country. It's like, well, I love my country, but, you know, it's they're not mutually exclusive. Of course, you can, it's not saying that other lives don't matter, it's just they also matter. You know, and so I think that's a really important distinction to make. And, you know, I spend a lot of my time listening and learning. Of course, I'm still, the amount of knowledge I have is is slipping on. So the best thing that I can do, right, is listen to our community and listen into communities of color. It's something that I was talking to Benny Williams in the Voice of Heat. And I told him, you know, we were talking, we were talking, and I was like, listen, I was like, if it was Native American, then it's super easy for me to catch on because I'm Native American. If it's kind of comes to the black community, it's, I'm not black. And so sometimes there are things that we won't catch, you know? And so I think it's really important for us to listen, and that's what I've been trying to do, listen and learn the best that I can. On a statewide level, I've been talking to a lot of other boards, school boards throughout the state in regards to what they're doing with COVID-19 and what adjustments and changes they're going to be making, such as like the furlough and other decisions we're making as a board. Also keeping track of what other boards around the state are doing to inform them of kind of what our plans are, as well as make sure that it's not just our district because we all got to be in this together. And then on a national level, as into my wall, as the Pacific Regional Director for the American, Indian and Alaska Native Regional Director, we had our meeting after I was nominated. We had a meeting about each different region, and we were just discussing what what each region is doing as far as, and it looks like their entire country is kind of where we're at. But me specifically, in my role as Board Number Eight, it's going to be, they had sent me a list of like a lot of different tribes. So I'm reaching out to a lot of different tribes in the West Coast, trying to get them involved in regards to education. So that is that. And now I pass it on to the superintendent's report, and I turn this over to Superintendent Perry.
All right, well, there's too many things to report on, too many questions to answer for everyone to still want to listen at 9:42. So I'm going to make this as many bullet points as possible. First of all, hands down, as we finalize the last week of school, our educators and staff across the district, hands down, have been amazing. Number two, hands down, the public testimony tonight was heartfelt and gave very clear examples. And I'm especially proud of our students who spoke and our staff who joined an alliance with our communities of color. I had asked them very directly to take action, and that is what we got from them tonight. And I'm so thankful to students, staff and our community for showing up tonight. I know that people want to know a lot about the 2021 school year, and I think I couldn't speak enough about it at quarter to 10. But here's what I will tell you. We are going to make every single effort to get as much in-person learning as we can, given the restrictions that we will have. At the same time, we will have families that really want full-on online learning. We're also making robust plans for that and everything in between so that we can have many flexible options. So if parents are wanting to hear, will there be any in-school, in-person instruction? The answer is yes, as long as we remain in Phase Two of this pandemic. If parents are asking, can I still do online learning? The answer is yes. The district is really working hard to stand up a robust online learning platform. Tons more to come. Graduations, we talked again today about graduations. Our high schoolers making, our high school leaders are making plans for in-person graduations that follow the Phase Two guidance, which will mean probably multiple ceremonies. I will tell you, McKay had a very fun conversation about how they're going to take over the whole Fairgrounds parking lot today, but that's, I don't want to be the spoiler alert on that. We'll have our graduation plans coming out hopefully within the next week to 10 days, but we're still counting on those dates we've set in August, that those are the graduation dates. And we'll follow the Phase Two guidance. Stuff and Things for Kids, that's going to be a, when we come back to school thing. We will have transition plans for how kids get their stuff and things. If there is still an urgent need out there from a student or a community member, there's something that a kid has to have. I talked to a parent about glasses the other day. I'm like, ask, we'll get them for you. Please contact your building principals. They will still be working to help you if there's something you urgently need. And SCAF, super disappointing. Again, we had a really strong board with a really strong executive director, and COVID hit. They'd made all the right moves to be successful and will help think about things like the Crystal Apple and the Awesome 3000. And then also, I mean, if we can't get out of this without saying, our parents have really been amazing in doing distance learning and how they managed with their kids and our educators that are parents manage with their kids. I had grandbaby duty for 20 minutes while I was working yesterday, and I was done with a one-year-old and trying to work. So I have no idea how parents are managing all that they are managing and working from home as well. So tons of appreciation tonight. And I just want to end with, we need to be sure we're really reflective about the, what we heard tonight, what it means for us, what the bigger conversations are beyond SROs, because they've started an important conversation. And for any one of us to shy away from that conversation would be a disservice to our kids in our community. So it's really a time to step up as leaders. And I think with that, that ends my comments.
Perfect, thank you so much. And Director Bethel, I apologize, I missed you. You did, you did want to have something you had to say, and I just completely missed the ball on that. So I apologize, and go ahead.
No worries. I just want, I should have said, and I had forgotten, Pam Burns, the regional chair for the President of the Oregon Mortgage Association, is working with the school district on a funding campaign. I mentioned in my report that food is a big deal, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Wolf can clarify that we've given out, given out 100,000-plus meals since COVID-19 shutdown. That's a lot of meals, and it's very expensive. And so our mortgage industry is partnering with the entire community to collect money to try to continue that food effort, which is very much needed. And Lillian's communication team has done a great job of getting that information out. Like Lillian just said, more than 1 million, oh, I'm sorry, 1 million? Oh, my gosh, more than 1 million meals since the start of COVID-19. So that's ridiculously profound, and we need help with money. So this is the best place to say, please go and support the district's effort to partner with that organization and donate, and go to the Facebook page of the district to find that link. Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you, Director Bethel. And and again, I just want to say for our entire board, thank you so much for pushing through long meeting, and we're going to have more long meetings. You know, this is, this is why we're here. This is our time, like Christie said, you know, it's our time to step up the lead. It's our time to listen to our students who are at home alone, our parents who are dealing with a lot and struggling to even get their unemployment checks, as well as our communities of color who are clearly hurting as well. So I think this is our time to listen, learn and lead through service. So thank you, guys. And at that, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a good night, guys.